Safe and sound at home again. Let the waters roar, Jack. Safe and sound at home again. Let the waters roar, Jack. Long we've tossed on the road in Maine. Now we're safe ashore, Jack. Don't forget your old shipmate. Folly rolly, 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 ride-o.
With the... Just a minute. With the discussion of the A and R on Black Horse Lane. And would do I recognize Jeff Hassett? Is that who'll be speaking?
Yes, thank you. For the record, my name is Jeff Hassett. I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering. Would you like me to dive right into an overview of the project?
Please.
Okay. So I'm here on behalf of the property owner J A K LLC for a Form A approval not required subdivision plan. This property is 70 Black Horse Lane. It's made up of three lots. One being the lot containing number 70 Black Horse Lane. The other two lots date back to 1936 and they're subject to the Section 8.3 zoning exemption. The plant, the property probably does look familiar. We were in front of you in 2017 with an A and R plan very similar to this one that you did endorse. That plan made the those undeveloped lots, lots one and two, fully conforming. It gave them frontage on Black Horse Lane. This plan makes only two very minor adjustments. It's making an adjustment to the lot line between lots one and two. So the lot line between the two currently undeveloped lots is adjusted. And then it also makes Supper Island one continuous parcel. And I will note that Supper Island does now have a conservation restriction on it. So it will never be developed in the future. Thank you.
Planning Board members, beginning with Clark Brewer. Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I understand that this section of Black Horse Lane may be legally different than the remainder of Black Horse Lane that runs and intersects with Summer Street. But the planning board did take a vote. As such, we would have determined that the that the remainder or the this part of Black Horse Lane is of sufficient width and carrying utilities and so forth. So I don't think this is a substantial change to what was previously approved. So I don't have any comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Tom Callahan.
Well, the fact that this was approved in 2017 is news to me and so kind of changes my opinion. But where is the frontage on Black Horse Lane? On telling me that little strip that says Black Horse Lane beyond the street? The main part of the street is legally Black Horse Lane?
Yeah, that is correct. Black Horse Lane all the way up to that point is a private way. It is paved. It does have utilities. And as Clark mentioned, that was discussed and determined back in 2017. So this this plan doesn't change the frontage in that area in any way.
So there's proof that that is the that is actually part of Black Horse Lane?
That's correct, yes.
And it's not just a common driveway?
That's correct, yes.
I wasn't here in 2017, so I'll have to defer to that. But otherwise, I would question this, whether this is an A and R project.
All right, thank you. Paul Grady. Any comments, Paul?
I'm sorry, Amy, I was confused by mistake. No, I have no comment on this.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter.
No comment.
All right, Paul Colery.
No comment, Madam Chair.
Lauren, would you like to have, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like, oh, sorry. I'm on two computers. Okay, there we go. I would just like to state that there were several people who did write in. One was yesterday earlier.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not working. Somebody's got, maybe I need to turn off.
Is that better? Yes, okay, sorry. I have two laptops here, so this is the first time with two laptops. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just notify the board that I did, two things actually. I received members of comments in the public. Though this isn't a public hearing, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board. I heard from Abutters at 94, which is the immediate Abutter, as well as at 10 Black Horse. They have concern that there's a misunderstanding about where Black Horse Lane ends, as to where, you know, the existing private property begins. Concerns over easement. There was a request from the the owner actually at 94 Black Horse Lane for the board to defer the decision on this to a subsequent meeting so that there could be further investigation on that. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. That was a request that we received from the public. In addition, I did just ask for clarification from Morse Engineering to speak to the board tonight, just to confirm about whether there were any new buildable lots being formed by this. I do believe that Jeff has spoke to that, that this is not creating a new buildable lot, just changing lot lines. So that question has been answered. And then there was just a question I had for Jeff as to, there are parcel IDs referenced on the plan. There are only two parcel IDs referenced. And I do believe that on our assessor's database that there are three parcel IDs. So I just wanted to have a point of clarification. There is a chance that there may be a mistake in our assessor database, but I just wanted to flag that and have some clarification there.
Yeah, that was brought to my attention today by Greg. The the point being is that the title block has two parcel IDs and there are actually three. We were hoping that we could write that on to the A and R plan, the Mylar copy.
Now, if, would you be able to submit? We would need a revised plan for the records.
Yeah, the way I've handled kind of a minor typo like that in the past is I've just written right on the Mylar with a pen. But if it's easier for you or just I can drop off a revised one in the morning. Either way, that has that has that other assessor's parcel typed on it, either way.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to to raise really a point of information, which is, I feel I'm in a quandary at this moment in light of the fact that there is a resident who is indicating that there is an ambiguous, as far as they're concerned, property line. Now, I don't, I don't know enough about the project or the site. I'm just wondering if it is possible that what they're saying is true. And if it is, then the issue would be we could request that this be postponed until a decision was made that the line is actually correct.
So to that, we're not creating any new lots. These are lots that were subject to the Section 8.3 exemption and they've been in existence since 1936. This A and R plan, as well as one from 2017, only reconfigures those lots. And back in 2017, that determination was already made. So to continue this would be detrimental to the seller of the property, the currently current owner, who has a closing schedule for next week.
Karis North.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If there is a dispute among the private landowners here, that is not something that the planning board, the planning board doesn't have authority to determine a private land dispute. And since that this 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 lane and these lot lines, and I've looked at the 2017 plan and this A and R is consistent with that plan, I'm not sure that there's any basis for the planning board to wade into that dispute in any event.
Tom Callahan. You're not, Tom, you're not talking. Unmute yourself.
Trying to get the screen to work so I can see everybody inside. I, if I looked at this at first glance, which I did because I didn't know there was a 2017, I'd ask what what was, where was the legal frontage? And I don't know what proof was presented in 2017, but if question is being raised, I would raise the same question. What's what's the proof that this is part of Black Horse Lane all the way up where these lots are? What proof was presented in 2017? And can't we look at it again today? And it's not a question of dispute between landowners that we get involved in. It's a question of whether the criteria for an A and R, which is adequate frontage on a way, is legally met.
So I think I can answer that. I'm not muted, am I? No. If the 1936 record plan shows that as a proposed right of way, the entire distance, and it is paved and it does have utilities. So it's been, it's been a right of way since 1936 it was created.
All right, thank you for that. Jen and then Clark.
Actually, Madam Chair, if you want to take Clark's questions, I just don't want to lose sight that we have a couple of Q and A questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. Clark?
Yeah, what is the statutory time limit for voting on the A and R? As if we don't make a endorsement or give reasons for not endorsing the plan, then in the, within the time limit, then the applicant gets a statutory constructive approval. So what is, what is the timeline on on this?
21 days after receipt of the application.
And when was that, when was it received?
He told you the application is dated to July 2nd.
Well, it was, it's stamped. Is that the stamp date? That's not the...
No, I don't have a stamp on mine.
When it was submitted to the, to the town of Cohasset?
July 28th, 2020 is the date that it was received by the town clerk is the stamped page that I have.
Does, can someone do the math for me? We're into it for about eight days?
Yeah, there's 14 days left.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess I would, I would say back in 2017, then the the planning board endorsed a plan that also incorporated a part of Supper Island as a part of those lots. But we would, we would have had to determine at that time that the, that the, that the way was a way of longstanding that predates zoning.
Clark, would that have been referenced in the original discussion so that we could go back to the file and see whether or not that information was there?
Well, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's relevant at this point, whether we have the ability to delay without risking constructive approval.
Well, that would be up to the developer, wouldn't it?
No, I mean, we could request that they give us additional time, but they're not obligated to legally. Maybe Karis has a comment on this.
Yeah, the, I believe the statute says shall act. So your timeframe is fairly constrained. If the applicant agrees to give you additional time, they can. But as Clark said, they're not required to.
All right, Eric Potter.
Has there been any other, was it just a concern that was raised? Or is there any other documentation or information that we received that backed up the concern? Or is it, you know, was it just an open-ended question, kind of a concern about the, whether or not this was sufficient?
I have not received any documentation.
The reason why I ask just is because, you know, I think that we have to depend upon, a lot of times upon the professionals to represent that this is a A and R plan that meets the requirements and and absent some sort of evidence to the contrary that we can at least rely upon, especially with the timelines. I think that's maybe a little bit of the intent upon having to vote on an A and R plan so that things don't get dragged on and held up in this sort of way. And especially concerning the fact that there's already been a ruling on this. And it's really not a determination on whether or not there's sufficient access or that right away is sufficient enough, but really just a reconfiguration of lot lines that have already been divided. Now, I, there's already been a precedent set on this particular A and R, you know, absent some sort of substantial evidence that we, the planning board did something wrong or there was a, you know, not enough information at that time. You know, I don't know that to take and take that and make that a point of our decision really makes a lot of sense.
Tom Callahan.
I'm sitting here not knowing if the planning board did make the mistakes because I have nothing in front of me. And I don't have any evidence of what's where this 1936 plan was. You have a reference to it. I got the North with registry deeds online right now. I'll look it up.
Just a minute. Eric Potter, then Clark.
But with all due respect, Tom, I don't think that's a requirement of the applicant to do that. And just to raise the issue, I think that there would be some sort of responsibility to provide a little bit of evidence for us to go off of. You know, I think there has to be some sort of reliance that the architect, the professionals are kind of doing their due diligence prior to taking on a client and submitting an A and R plan in front of the board. They're putting their name stamped to this. So, I mean, it's not a requirement. All I'm saying is it's not a requirement of the application.
I would disagree.
Tom, Tom?
I'm sorry.
Clark?
Yeah, I mean, the the main conditions that we vote on for an A and R is, is there, is there frontage? And is there access? And the horse left the barn in 2017 in terms of whether this section of of Black Horse Lane qualifies as frontage. The planning board determines that. And I don't want to, I don't think we want to rethink what was done three years ago. I don't think we can. I think any appeal period has passed. What we have in front of us is a changing of interior lot lines in the overall parcel. All the lot sizes are conforming.
All right. I will say for future reference in a situation like this, I mentioned a couple of days ago that the lack of information on the case, just to know, something more than a few words on a piece of paper would have probably helped a bit. So perhaps we can think of a way to ensure that we generate additional information prior to this kind of a discussion. I'm gonna, unless there's something, somebody that has a really burning issue, I'd like to close this now and and conclude this discussion.
It's, this isn't a public, public hearing per se. A and Rs aren't a public hearing, even though it's a part of a regular public meeting. So we don't have to close the public hearing portion. We just need to vote either to endorse or or not.
Right, right. So may I get to ask someone to state an endorsement?
It's a motion.
Would you like me to?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I apologize, but there's a, did you want me to address the Q and A? Because we, we have one, we have one neighbor that did have a couple of questions that that Jeff could, Hassett could probably answer.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
That's okay. I'm sorry to interrupt. Paul, Paul Canny of 10 Black Horse Lane. He wants to know if it's going to be shown where the applicant believes Black Horse Lane ends, but I believe you've already addressed that. Driveways at 70 and 94. And also, why is the existing lot with structures advertised as having three to four buildable lots? We are concerned about the impact on on Black Horse Lane with five to six new houses. Those are his questions.
I, yeah, as far as being advertised as three to four lots, it probably does have the area to do so. I don't know if we've done conceptual plans showing that. But what they're looking to do here is just to build on lots one and two. At this point, what we've already been through conservation, the site plans are fully done. They have stormwater permits. The building permit applications are are already in process. They've been filed. So it's really throughout that permitting and design process, they decided to redo the lot lines between lots in one and two and then merge Supper Island. So this is the only work that's proposed at this point.
Any further comments? Or comments in response to the public's question?
No.
All right, then let's move forward. And then, and I'd like to get an endorsement in a second.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R with the changed interior lot lines.
Can I have a second, please? Eric Potter, second. All in favor?
Clark Brewer says aye.
Eric Potter says aye.
Tom Callahan? Paul Grady?
Amy, you can, you can vote and be a majority of the board.
Right.
Or you can ask Paul Colery to vote.
Colery too. So Paul Colery?
Paul, you're muted.
I will vote.
I'm sorry, Paul Colery was muted. Paul Colery, aye.
Thank you. Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the chair to endorse the A and R for the board.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Clark Brewer says aye.
Tom Callahan.
Eric Potter says aye.
Aye.
Please state your name.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady? Paul, Paul Colery.
Paul Colery, aye.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we're about 13 minutes late.
Madam Chair, may I just make a quick request, please? With, since a new plan is being dropped off, the endorsement language does not have the, that's on the the plan that was provided does not have the recommended endorsement language that we, that the planning board agreed upon last year that talks about the fact that an endorsement does not mean that there are any zoning approvals. Could I ask Ms. Lynn to provide that language to Mr. Hassett and make sure that's included on the revised plan that's submitted for your signature?
Yes, certainly. We also do have a stamp so that if it was provided as or in our revised format and didn't include the language, we would think, but, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're acid.
Thank you, board. Have a nice evening.
Okay, let's see who's here. Well, we're ready to start. We're a little bit late. So we're now going to move, I'm going to reopen the public hearing on the CHI project Cohasset Overlay District, Cohasset Harbor Overlay District. And let me just remind people of how the conversation is going to go. The developers representative will speak first. Our peer reviewers will speak second. The planning board members will speak third and any of the staff that has comments. And then we will open up the discussion to the public. Let me begin by Clark Brewer.
Point of order. At our first hearing, we did not have our peer reviewers give their response to the original application. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be reasonable to allow the peer reviewers to give their presentation prior to the applicant's first response?
So we thought this through and felt that the initial discussion by the landowners professionals provided such a high-level overview that basically we were going to probably retread ground that would then, it would make sense to have the peer reviewer going afterwards. So that was why the decision was made that way. Okay. Great, but first let me first turn to Lauren Lind and ask her to make any introductory comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so just to remind everybody, we, this hearing, though it was opened on June 17th, it was, we did not hear anything. The first actual hearing of substance was July 8th, which is our last planning board meeting. At the time we spoke, we heard from the applicant. We did not hear from our peer reviewer. We will be hearing from our peer reviewer this evening following the applicant. After that, we'll hear from the member comments. We'll hear public comment after that. Again, just to remind those listening in the public, please input your name and your full name and address into the Q and A function. And staff members will, during our public comment, we will promote and we'll take public comment at that time. This application is for special permit and site plan approval before the planning board for 124 and 87 Elm Street. And with that, I have no further comment. I'll turn it over to the applicant team, which involves Adam Brodsky, John Cavanaro, George McGoldrick, and Ted Lubitz. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and planning board. Thank you, Lauren. Tonight, we are going to answer a couple of questions that were raised in the last hearing first. And then we will obviously be able to answer some of the peer reviewers questions that had come up. Going to have Adam Brodsky, the attorney, going to have Adam Brodsky give a quick little overview about the question of the commercial and non-residential percentage that came up in the last hearing. If you, Lauren or Jen, if you could allow us to share a screen, we can put up some charts and such.
Who will be sharing their screen?
Ted. Ted Lubitz.
Ted should have sharing screen ability now.
So in anticipation of trying to resolve some of the issues on the residential and commercial space, we put together a presentation. And Adam, if you could just give sort of a legal background?
Thank you, George. Madam Chair and everyone, good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky and I represent the applicant. I'm an attorney with Drowin, Tacho, and Morgan in Hangup. Since we're proposing dwelling units on the ground floor of the north and south buildings at 124 Elm Street, we're required to comply with the requirement at Section 322 6B1 to provide a minimum of 15% of the building area dedicated to ground floor commercial or non-residential use, which can also include seasonal commercial uses. And I'd just note, because we often use the word re... And I'd just note, because we often use the word retail as shorthand, the bylaw actually doesn't speak to retail use. It speaks to commercial and non-residential. And I, I need to state the obvious, but we're working our way through a new bylaw and the first project under the bylaw. And I, I don't want to disparage the drafters of the bylaw who did a wonderful job of doing it, but there are certain aspects of the bylaw that are somewhat unclear, and this was one of them. We interpreted the phrase "building area" more broadly to include the commercial and non-residential uses proposed outside of the footprint of the actual buildings. The bylaw suggested that because when we have to calculate the maximum 5% of the total building area, the bylaw expressly says it can be dedicated to outdoor seasonal use, such as outdoor eating areas. But regardless, it appears that the peer review consultants, and we suspect likely the planning board, are going to narrowly construe that phrase "building area" to apply only to the building footprints. And we're more than willing to adopt that interpretation of the bylaw. And in a few moments, Ted Lubitz will provide our updated calculations. And using those calculations, we do not meet the minimum of 15%. And as such, we have requested a waiver. We've provided the board with sufficient evidence to demonstrate that we're making active uses on the ground floor, which is the standard required of the bylaw. And equally important, we're going to demonstrate that the project simply can't support any additional commercial or non-residential use other than what's being proposed. And as Ted and George will explain in more detail, there's simply no demand for these uses and would effectively be building space that would be vacant for long periods of time, which no one wants within this district. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ted and George.
Will it be Ted or George speaking?
I'll start.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, you will let me do the video, which is fine by me. Trying to come back on the video. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much. So basically, what we have been trying to do is to obviously conform to the bylaw, but also conform to what the reality is in terms of marketing the project and ensuring that the entire project is a success. So we've spent a significant amount of time talking with retail brokers, commercial brokers. We've spent a lot of time talking to potential tenants. We have spent significant time in other waterfront areas trying to understand what works and what doesn't work. And at the end of the day, because of the fact that we are in this little hamlet of Cohasset and we're bordered by the ocean, we don't have the foot traffic or the vehicle traffic that retailers typically want. If you look at what's happening in Cohasset today, and this is actually even pre-COVID, there's over 70,000 square feet of available commercial slash retail space today that include, that may or may not include, I'm not 100% sure, the 30,000 square feet that's being built at, up at the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, which only has one tenant sign for about 3,000 square feet. And that tenant happens to be a tenant in the adjacent building moving over to be closer to Stop &amp; Shop. So the 3,000 square feet that's leased in the new building that's under construction is actually losing it from the other building. The other building had King Jewelers in there. That's been vacant for over five years. There's other examples, obviously, throughout the town. Obviously, Tedeschi's is the most apparent, having now three years been vacant. So we're very concerned about creating a lot of commercial space down the harbor that would not be able to be rented out, or in this case is also sold. So what we elected to do was to spend a significant, significant amount of the project and make open space. Because the goal of the master plan and the goal of the harbor plan was to create vibrancy down at the harbor. So we are taking a 100% private space that is not accessible to the general public, and we're creating a 20,000 square foot park as open space to create that vibrancy, to get people to come down to the harbor and do the harbor. We believe that that is what creates the vibrancy, and that is what creates having people come down to the harbor. Organic uses such as yoga classes, reading, think about all the artists that set up their artwork along the shores of Border Street and Elm Street. That is what we believe is what's going to create and bring people to the harbor, not necessarily brick and mortar commercial or retail space. In addition, and what's really important is the fact that if we build all the space that's required under the bylaw, it's not necessarily going to create a vibrant use because that space can be utilized by commercial offices, real estate offices, healthcare offices. And in the past three to four years in the downtown Cohasset, many of the recent leases in what we always thought is retail space has gone to office use. The most compelling example is directly across the street at 91 Elm Street, where there was a hairdresser there for a number of years. She moved out to a different town. It's been vacant. And the only two people that contacted the owners, once the "for rent" sign went up, was CHP for potential office use if we went forward on the project in a sales office, which we wouldn't need it for six or eight months. And the only other user, the only person that called was an office user who was now leased it for his healthcare business. So it's commercial space. It fits the bylaw, but it's not of use that anyone's going to go down to the harbor and use. So we believe firmly, and based on what we've seen in other towns, is that by creating open space and by creating parks and kiosks is what will bring people down to the harbor. Well, based on the language of non-residential uses and commercial space, again, we think we've fulfilled it, but just in case there's a concern by anybody because the non-residential use is not clearly defined, we're going to ask for a waiver. It's about 3,400 square feet. That's the magnitude of what all we're asking for. And to put that in perspective, that's about one and a half times the size of the current Tedeschi's space that's downtown. So at the end of the day, what we're asking a waiver for, we believe, is a small amount of space. But what the public and what the town is getting is four times that amount in additional outs, outdoor public space. We've got a couple of examples we wanted to show you of one town that used the chapter 91 and built out to the area that they needed to. And we're going to show you our proposal for it. Ted? Up in Marina Bay, the most recent project is a Mariel apartment complex that was built, and it's right along the waterfront. Marina Bay has got 2,000 residents plus or minus. They've got over 1,000 condominiums and apartments within 500 yards of their commercial and retail space. And yet they have had a difficult time in leasing up some of the space. The Mariel building has got vacant space here on the right-hand side of the screen, still three years after the building is opened. The uses that are in Marina Bay are primarily eating establishments. There's five restaurants. There's a six one being proposed. They do have one market. They do have a 300 square foot women's clothing store. And then they have numerous dentists, real estate offices, and legal firms that occupy the balance of the space. If you look at the right-hand side of the screen, that's what was being built. That's retail, commercial along the edge, required under chapter 91, and similar to what we could be required to do. Next screen. What we're proposing is to pull back the buildings even more than the 25 feet that is required under this bylaw and create this open space. We believe that this is the type of space that brings people down to the harbor and lets them recreate around the area, lets them meet with other people. We're not giving up on commercial retail space. We still have space here in the top right corner. We'd love to see a seabird-type situation with maybe a workstation involved in that. We think would be a great use, but unfortunately, we can't determine who's going to go in there. But what we can determine is what gets used in the outside space. We do know if there's an open park, there'll be yoga, fitness, reading, talking, eating, painting, local vendors. The town can use part of this area for celebrations spilling over from Veterans Park. And again, the kiosk concept and idea, which actually is in the bylaws and the master plan and harbor plan, allows young entrepreneurs, for example, to start up a business without having the infrastructure costs of rent or significant rent or building out space. And we propose to have numerous kiosks down here, and not only perhaps young entrepreneurs, CMI, CSCR kids can, can sell things, but perhaps having our village stores have a smaller outpost down at the, down at the harbor. So that when people from out of town come to the harbor and they're sitting and viewing, and they may be getting something from a small kiosk, they can then go downtown to Darrell's and buy more things from them. We're hoping and we believe it's going to happen that by opening up the view corridor here, we're going to be attracting a lot more people down Elm Street, and we want to have active uses for them. And unfortunately, because of the seasonality of this, that doesn't necessarily mean it is a brick and mortar, but it does mean outdoor recreational space. Some of the uses that we've talked about are kayak and canoe storage, bike racks. We, again, we do have retail space here with outdoor patios, and we really hope that we can convince someone to come in and do some type of local breakfast lunch place. The neighbors, quite honestly, do not want to have a restaurant in the evening. That's what pretty much across the board, they've asked us to refrain from doing. We perhaps can do that somehow. But again, at the end of the day, what goes in the brick and mortar is what the market predicts. We can't command an ice cream store to go into the brick and mortars. We can't command a yoga studio to go in there. But we can control what happens outside. So just want to end on the note that we believe that even though we don't meet a certain percentage of the bylaw, we think we more than meet the concept that the master plan, the overlay district and the harbor plan in terms of getting people down to the harbor by creating this 20,000 square foot park, this open space that'll bring people down when people are down at the harbor.
Are you finished, Mr. McGoldrick?
That's on the open space and on the commercial, yes.
All right. Would you like to continue speaking, or would you like to pass it off to one of your colleagues?
So the only other thing that we had talked about last week that a number of residents had mentioned was in terms of bike and pedestrian flow. So we, we do want to show an overview, and this is something that's a work in progress, and we're more than happy to work with the town. The overview with the access points?
Yep.
Go down to the, there we go. There were a couple of public comments in the last meeting about specifically bike access. And what we wanted to show in this screen was currently there are four egress and access points from the existing facility, two on Margin Street, and then one on Cove Street and one on Elm Street. And of course, across the street in the West Building, there's one there. What we're proposing is to close off the three that you see in the red there and just having one access point down at Elm Street. In addition, the green line shows where we're proposing a new sidewalk, where today there is none. Most importantly, if you think about the kids that are riding their bikes up from Stockbridge and Margin Street to go to the sailing club and to jump off the bridge, currently they now have to come up that narrow part of Margin Street. They have to take a left across traffic, another left out of Cove Street onto Elm Street, across traffic. Now they'll be able to, if the project is approved, they'll be able to cut across along the waterfront and save a significant amount of crossing streets in order to get to their destinations. A lot of what can be done with striping and signage on the roads is something that we would love to work with the town on as we go forward with this project. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over now to John Cavanaro to talk a little bit about improvements.
Thank you. John Cavanaro, please state your name, your address. You, you're not, can't hear you.
Good evening. Thank you, George. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and public participating in the hearing this evening. If I would have the ability to share screen as well. Lauren?
One moment, please.
I will walk through the site plan.
You should be able to share a screen.
So I'll, I'll give a brief review of the site plan before we get into the peer review comments and pass it back over to George when I close. But essentially, we sort of went through a higher level of review, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, of the site plan review at the last hearing. And so I'm going to just walk through the existing and proposed conditions from a site standpoint. I won't get into the, the nitty-gritty of the tables that are on the plan. I'm sure we'll walk through those. But essentially, what we're starting with is the Cohasset Harbor insight that is nearly entirely populated with impervious area at 124 Elm Street. So 124 Elm has the existing layout of the multi-room hotel facility with surface parking that surrounds the entire building on three sides. And there's also three existing curb openings adjacent to the parking lot, plus a fourth curb opening that is accesses the rear parking area that is right now shared between the private entity of Cohasset Harbor Inn and a portion of it is within the publicly owned land. So this is an area that is, creates a lot of ambiguity as it relates to access and ownership due to the configuration of the property line that I'm following on this line. So it, it's a very odd-shaped line that makes its way circuitously through the existing parking lot. And what that does is it, it prevents access to a number of the existing spaces that are on the public land. So for instance, this is the existing curb opening, and there are two spaces that are accessible on each side, so about four spaces. But beyond that, we start to run into a privately owned boundary. So this, this whole area is something that is identified as a potential improvement as far as access and more, a cleaner dedication to those parking spaces between the two entities. Right now, the, this whole facility is serviced with public sewer. There are very limited stormwater management improvements on the site itself. Most of the site runs into Elm Street or Margin Street and drains towards Cohasset Harbor. On the other side of Elm Street at 87, we have two detached buildings, mixed-use buildings that exist today, some retail on the lower levels and residential mix on the upper levels in both buildings. Large paved parking lot that runs adjacent to the James Brook. There are no striped parking spaces here. As was mentioned previously, this was really serviced as a valet lot that was an accessory use to the, to the inn and other facilities that were once owned by a larger entity. So this is sort of a, an unmarked parking lot that doesn't necessarily have a specific capacity assigned to it. The Cohasset Harbor side has 60 striped spaces in its entirety, including 17 spaces that are within this area over here. So if we were to guess how many spaces could fit in this area, I would probably guess in the, in the range of 20 spaces. So we're starting with roughly about 80's parking. So we're starting with roughly about 80 parking spaces between the two spots that's on the property itself. Going to pass over this exhibit, which was part of the original plan. Essentially goes over the ground area ratio, which was discussed at the last hearing, but essentially we're meeting the floor area ratio for the project. This was more to identify a breakup between retail and publicly accessible and non-residential ground area. So I'm going to pass over that and get to a parking exhibit to just sort of briefly discuss the proposed parking as opposed to what I just mentioned with the existing layout. So proposed, the overall intention with this project is to put a majority of the parking within the structures themselves. So what that does is it it really provides a cleaner, accessible path for the parking for both facilities, but it also puts all the the impervious coverage underneath the roof, which also improves water quality. So that's looked at as a benefit from a stormwater management standpoint. Where of this side of the, of the project, the north side, we'll call it on the 124 Elm Street side, we're proposing to cite 52 parking spaces on this side, 40 of which will be in structure, and 12 are located in the exterior. We've maintained that 17 space parking count on the exterior with a mix of both municipal and commercially accessible spaces. But as I mentioned, this is an opportunity that the applicant has already begun discussions with the town about creating some cross easements to benefit both parties so that these spaces can be accessed with the new curb opening adjacent to the Veterans Park and also provide some improved access and easements over the James Burke Culvert that passes through this area as well. So that opportunity to create some cross easements here is a real benefit from both infrastructure as well as access. On the south side of the project, we're also proposing a large portion of the parking to be structured. 20 spaces will be located within and beneath the building itself. It is an open air configuration in the back, so this is not a buried subgrade parking similar to what's at 124. This will also have a single access from Elm Street, two-way. So the bulk of the parking beneath the building will be accessed from that double, that, and two-way entrance, and then there will be access behind the building to get to some additional commercially designated parking behind the building. There'll be eight exterior spaces back there. So we'll have 21 within the garage and eight in the back for a total of 29 spaces on the south side. As I mentioned, we have 53 spaces on the backside, I'm sorry, 50, 52 spaces on the, on the north side for a total of 81 spaces. So we're still at that roughly 80 space count, which, which matches the existing, but it also provides an excess number of parking spaces for the residential demand, and we're slightly under on the commercial demand. The site plan itself, in terms of layout and grading, we talked a little bit about this at the last hearing as it relates to the landscape. Landscape architect walked us through the overall layout of the, of the site itself. But essentially what we're looking to do, as I mentioned, to really rehabilitate this exterior parking lot, keep a lot of the non-conforming spaces that we're seeking relief from. This will have access to the underground parking from the surface. Although the parking garage will be a single subgrade structure from the surface, the buildings come out as two individual buildings from the surface. On the 124 Elm Street side, there'll be sidewalk that will continue to wrap around the site and then get expanded with the elimination of the three curb openings, one on Elm Street and two on Margin Street. That provides an opportunity to extend and to expand the parking, I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalk along Elm Street and along Margin Street. So that sidewalk will continue into the site. We've taken an opportunity to cite three spaces, parallel spaces along Margin Street within the property line, and then continue the sidewalk where it doesn't exist today. This is, this is really curb cut and curb opening to the existing facility as well as building that fronts up against Margin Street and an existing retaining wall. So we're keeping that 25-foot no build setback for the Chapter 91 jurisdiction, which does not exist today. We're essentially eliminating about 1,200 square feet of building within that 25-foot no build zone. So as George has mentioned, the real big plus here is really the creation of this open space that doesn't exist today. Overall, from a stormwater management standpoint, we are reducing the amount of runoff. As you can see, we're substantially increasing the green space at the 124 Elm Street side. And we're also keeping things to a minimum on the 87 Elm Street side with pervious parking in the rear portion of the site itself. Lastly, in terms of the site overall development offsite, as George mentioned, there, there has been some initial dialogue, and there'll be continued to be dialogue with the town about improvements to the Elm Street and Margin Street corridors, specifically as it relates to improving bicycle access. There are things that can be done within the public way. They can really make a big difference in just in terms of striping and realigning some of the parking on Elm Street, but that, that really takes a discussion between the public as well as the private partnership. But really, it's more about coming up with a solution that works with what the existing facilities are using today and depend on, as well as coming up with things that are a little bit more safe. Sort of, for an example, look at the common that we just finished doing some work with the town on. It took a collaboration of a lot of folks, but that rehabilitation of just the common with some striping, curbing, realigning some directional alignments of the roadways can make a big difference. And I think there's a lot of opportunity here to do the same with improving the pedestrian walkways, crosswalks, redefining some of the, the bike lanes and that don't exist today around the site. I think that that'll be a big improvement. With that, I'm happy to pass it back off to George.
Thank you, John. So Madam Chair, that we believe answers some of the questions that were raised at the last hearing, and we're more than happy now to hear from the peer reviewers.
Great, thank you. And let me just state that in the previous discussion, I think almost all of us had a set of plans. I think Paul Grady may be the only one that doesn't have a physical set of plans. But when you were showing the images, because of the way we're working the screens, we weren't able to see them very well. So you may get some questions from people just asking for clarification because they couldn't zoom in as close to the image as they might want it to have done. So just to let you know, you may just get questions because of that. All right. So with that, Lauren, I'm going to pass it over to you and request that you invite our peer reviewers in.
Thank you. So now I'd like to introduce from Weston and Sampson, Darren Kirchian, Jeff Santa Cruz, and Jim Riordan. They are our team that will be presenting this evening, and they did provide a peer review assessment that was provided to the board about over a week ago. It was provided by applicant, and they did prepare responses. So with that, I'll promote them so that they can share their screen as necessary. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Lauren. My name is Darren Kirchian. I'm from Weston and Sampson. I'm a project manager for this peer review, as Lauren had mentioned. Also on our team is Jim Riordan, our technical lead, and Jeff Santa Cruz, our senior traffic engineer. So I should, I'll be able to compress a little bit of our presentation based on some of those site plan discussions that just preceded us. And then also, I guess we would just ask that we get uploaded the, any of the new slides that were presented by the applicant, which I think did occur, I see that on the website for the prior meeting, those would be, would be submitted. So at this point, I'll share my screen. I'm going to start the presentation. Is that showing up? Okay. So.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have maps in your presentation?
There are. There are some images, yes.
Okay, so let me just see. Lauren, is there some way that we can not share the way we're doing it so that the, the actual image of the presentation comes out clearly? Because you can't pick up any of the detail of the graphics.
Unfortunately, this is the only way that we can screen share. I wonder, Darren, is there a way that you can have it in full screen mode so that we don't see the small screen on the side?
Yeah, you'd go up towards, so speaker view.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're seeing this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. If you go up to speaker view, it'll click. Perfect. All right. Now we're fine.
My apologies.
It's not your fault.
Had it set up over here, but I'm going to just stop and reshare. My apologies. Sorry, I have three screens going, so this is not. I'm just going to do this for right now. Is that visible or?
That works.
Okay. So we're, we're just going to be presenting our peer review of the site plan that was just discussed for 124 and 87 Elm Street. I've introduced our team. Some of our introductory slides just match what was presented from the applicant in the site plan, just the location most folks on the color familiar with. We have some photos of the, the existing conditions of the Cohasset Harbor Inn. This top photo is just facing west and showing the harbor, kind of abutting that property and the Veterans Park off to the side. And so the photo on the bottom, we're looking southeast towards Veterans Park.
Excuse me. The image we're looking at is not, must not be the one you're describing because this is the, the, okay, you're advancing it now.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then as the applicant had shown, this is their ground floor plan of the three buildings with the purple line representing some of the publicly accessible outdoor space which we had reviewed. So our review covered four main topics. Based on the last public hearing, we know the planning board wanted to hear about a bylaw compliance first, so we prioritize that. And we'll discuss that as a first topic. That generally relates back to the parking waiver that was requested by the applicant. And then we'll get into our traffic engineering study review, followed by commercial retail space evaluation and discussion. And lastly, a site plan layout in the public realm discussion of some constructability issues that we had and questions for the, for the applicant. And and that's, that's the last topic that we will be discussing. We've reviewed against the town's bylaws, specifically the site plan review, the zoning bylaws that are related to special permit, and also the HVBOD design standards, which that applicant has mentioned. Just to provide some dates and context, our comments were provided on July 22 to the applicant and the planning board. And we did receive responses last Wednesday, and we've incorporated those since, since what we had submitted on Monday to the planning board, just as a, as a note. So on the bylaw compliance item, the initial application included one waiver request for multiple items related to parking. So we have reviewed that and will provide some more comments on that further in the presentation. We also looked at the traffic study that was provided with the application and had comments on that, including related to the, with the Margin Street and concerns with potential narrowing of that roadway. As the applicant has discussed just now, the ground floor area usage and the percentages of non-residential or commercial retail space. They have since requested a waiver for that, which we're reflecting in this presentation. And then just to be able to follow along on the presentation with our initial memo and the applicant's response, all the subsequent slides are going to have in parentheses, just the section reference back to the memo. So if anyone is looking at this slides in the future, they can reference back to the memo and easily go between the documents. And with that, I'll transfer over to Jeff. I'll continue to be advancing the slides, but I'm on mute myself.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Santa Cruz. I am a registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer in the Commonwealth. So we took a look at the overall site plans, the traffic study, compared them with the town's bylaws, excuse me, and provide our review. Just start overall, before I get into parking, the traffic study itself was done in conformance with acceptable standards. From a trip generation, there was a couple very minor trip generation variations, but I do not believe that they will be detrimental. It was like one car difference, depending on how you calculate it. But overall, the operations at the proposed driveways are acceptable. So that's pretty much will lean to the comments that I had on the operational side of the traffic study. On the parking allocation, we had asked the applicant for some additional clarification on the uses of the residential and public spaces as it was on the plan. It just showed them all combined and didn't really clarify where they would be on the plan. They did provide us some additional information on that as part of their response, which we really do appreciate. That gave us a much better understanding of what was being proposed to be residential in certain areas and the commercially public uses in the other. A couple of things we did note with the parking layout is standard parking lot layout and in keeping with the board, excuse me, the town's guidelines. Normally, there is a, about a six-foot kind of extension at the end of the parking lot that allows for a person backing out of the last spot to kind of turn the vehicle into in order to facilitate pulling forward and exiting the parking lot. The site plan on both sides of both 124 and 87 is kind of lacking that area. Not so much on 87 is they have the proposed loading zone. So it does give a little bit more room, but definitely on the 124 side. And we, we have taken a look at that. In order to provide it, it would require probably removing two parking spots from the lot in order to create it because you're right up against that wall that's along the waterfront. So that would be really up to the board to make a final decision on, but it just makes the parking maneuver a little more difficult. It does not prevent you from exiting the parking lot. Instead of making maybe a two-point turn, you'd have to make a three-point. But given that you're also trying to provide public access and whatnot, you know, it could still be done safely. We noted that in their response that they will be providing a little bit more information on the plan of the different uses as opposed to just in their response letter, and we look forward to seeing that. Excuse me. The overall, the parking does, excuse me, seem to lay out well. One thing we did notice is the number of ADA compliant spaces that were provided on the overall site. We looked at the town bylaws, and it specifically talks about having a certain number of spaces be handicapped based on the number of overall parking. The applicant's response indicates that under CMR 521, excuse me, 521 CMR 10 is what governs residential uses in the state, in the Commonwealth. However, when you refer to Section 10.3 of that, it specifically pushes you back to CMR 23, which actually ends up being almost a mirror of what the town's bylaw standard is in terms of the number of spaces that must be provided. So in our estimation, we believe that there is still a slight undercounting of the amount of ADA undercounting of the amount of ADA spaces that are required on the site. For the 38 spaces on site 124 for the residential, according to the standard, you'd need to provide two ADA spaces. And for the 22 public spaces, you would need to provide one ADA space, which you have indeed provided. On lot 87, the 20 spaces interior to the building will require one ADA space and the exterior public spaces would not require any because they fall below the minimum threshold. One other part of the CMR 23, because CMR should go back, CMR 10 indicates that you must still follow CMR 23.2 through sections point eight. And in one of those other section, it indicates that for, I'm gonna try and get the exact wording here so I don't mess it up. I apologize. It indicates that for all the spaces that you provide, at least one of those spaces should also be van accessible. It's difficult to tell on the site plan without measurements whether the spot that is being provided in the public space is indeed van accessible. The only problem is that might be a little bit more problematic in the location it's shown because it is up against the wall for someone who it needs the accessibility. So I would suggest that maybe it's something that's looked at a little further. They did provide additional clarification on the actual uses of the parking and parking demand, both on weekdays and weekends as required. I've taken a look at this and I believe it is completely reasonable on the total number of spaces they provide and the information that they indicate on the possibility of overlap of uses seems minimal. So with that standpoint, I would say that I believe that they have provided enough information and support their request. Darren. One of our original comments also was about the tandem parking within the garages. There wasn't really clarification on how those would be addressed. Our initial concern was if the tandem spaces were open to any resident to use, then one resident could potentially block another unless there was some sort of process. The applicant has this provide additional information saying each of the two tandem spots will be issued to single residents. Therefore, the resident of any park would only block themselves and not any other owner. We feel comfortable that this has been addressed. We're also happy to see that the tandem spaces are all being used by residential use or owners of the building, or sorry, commercial people that might be in the some of the facilities such that they can coordinate any moving of vehicles. In regards to the screening of the ground level parking, there is a requirement that there must be screening provided between roadway and parking spaces. There's also a requirement that says that there must be 10 feet between any adjacent roadway curb and the parking spot. Taking a look at the existing site and the proposed site. The original spaces are provide all in public property. And while the space is being proposed back on public property, they are being considered as part of the entire development package. And there will be, as mentioned, some access agreements back and forth. Looking at the tightness of the site and again, at the necessity of trying to provide as much public parking for the use, especially the park and these new open areas that are being provided. We looked at it and the sidewalk is right up against those parking spots, so there does not seem to be an appropriate area where you could provide screening, whether it be a fence or some type of shrubbery that would A allow a car door to open without walking into it, or B would reduce the amount of sight lines that that car would have to the driveway for our vehicle entering that as they attended back up. Therefore, we believe that overall that the waiver would, you know, be appropriate for those two items. It keeps in good condition what's out there today. They are only the two spaces on the one side now, so they kind of have removed that on both sides of the lot. Trying to go back. The proposed parallel parking on Elm Street, there was a little confusion on our part. Some of the site plans didn't show any, but then as shown in the architectural rendering in the upper right, it appeared that maybe there was some proposal to do some parallel parking adjacent to the site. So we did ask for some clarification of that, which was indeed provided that they are not proposing the parking. The one thing that was a little concerning was the traffic study does take a look at stopping site distance as one of the criteria for the two exiting driveways entering, exiting to maintain safety. And it was seen in the study that each one of the driveways does have a restriction that would reduce the amount available to them for exiting. One in the study, it actually recommended making some improvements upon Elm Street to rectify the situation. One was the creation of a bump out at the southern kind of portion where the existing crosswalk is. And the other was putting the all of the angled parking to parallel parking such that you increase the sight lines, especially from the 87 lot driveway south. But as was indicated by the applicant, that's not shown on the plan. That's something that is still in progress. I would recommend that the board seriously consider making that a requirement of the application because it is a safety issue. And that this should be something that is addressed by the applicant as part of their approval process. Kind of going for you can go ahead and switch to next one there. On margin street, we had some concerns with the existing and proposed width. When we looked at the plans, there appears only half the roadway shown on margin street, so it was kind of difficult to judge where centerline of road was where the other curb was in relation to the plan. So we actually went to like a Google Street View, a Google Earth and took measurements from the existing retaining wall to the curb on the far side. The traffic study and the response from the applicant indicates it's two 17-foot lanes along margin street. I believe that is further north of the section where the retaining wall is. At the retaining wall, it measures approximately 24 plus or minus feet. And the applicant is proposing to take the wall out and push the sidewalk out in that area, which would actually further reduce the width of margin street as you come up the hill and kind of turn that corner around a couple utility poles that are right on the edge of the pavement. So we have requested some additional information there and for the applicant to take another look at that because we are concerned that it would be a safety issue both for drivers or bicyclists, as well as it starts to narrow out for emergency vehicles as well, getting through that area. One of the other things that we did note is in the kind of the purpose of statement of the Harborview Village Business Overlay District is to promote kind of crosswalk connections to sites to the north. And as the applicants indicated tonight, they are providing a whole bunch more open area, which they hopes draws more pedestrians and people to this area. With that in mind, we would suggest that the applicant, especially if they're rebuilding all the sidewalks around the site as part of the development, consider providing some sort of access crosswalk across margin street to the north side to kind of connect the two sides of the street, the north and the south. Right, go ahead. Darren. The other thing we asked for some clarification on because it was difficult to determine from the plan was the width of if it's remaining existing sidewalk or if it's becoming proposed sidewalks seemed to be quite narrow. And there were utility poles that were not turned on in the plan that are evident, both in the existing condition survey in the field, that may further restrict those actually below ADA standard, depending on exactly where the pole is located. So we have asked for some additional clarification of that from the applicant, which they indicated they will be taking a look at. We would recommend that at a minimum, they meet mass DOT's requirements for sidewalk width, which is five and a half feet from face of curb. Another comment we had was it was quite difficult to kind of tell where the driveway stopped and started at 87 Elm Street. It on the planet appears to be one. I don't know if it's concrete or the symbol seems to be like a concrete all the way across and there's no defined curb limits. Similar to the one on the 124 site. So we would just ask if they could maybe clarify that a little better for us to just show us the width. As there appears to be no curve in a portion of that, which would make it look like the sidewalk is part of the street. The intersection spacing of driveways under the the requirements is 150 feet from any intersection. We actually indicated that both driveways were within 150 feet, the 124 with the southern intersection. The 87, it you could look at it two ways. We considered that when Elm Street splits around the island, that is indeed another intersection. It may not be two different roads, but it has a stop sign condition. And it, you know, does intersect the roadway. So we would just suggest that the applicant add 87 Elm Street to their waiver request. And given the overall conditions and assuming that some improvements can be made out there to provide the required stopping site distance, we would be in support of that waiver, and that would be our recommendation to the board moving forward. And with that, that pretty much ends the traffic and parking discussion.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. And we'll have Jim Reardon continue our discussion on additional bylaw compliance and the site plan review.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Reardon from Weston and Sampson. I'm a AICP certified planner with about 25 years' experience. And as Darren mentioned, I'll be going over bylaw compliance. Begin with the view corridor. So this is related to comment 1.4.1 in our comments memorandum. The applicant confirmed from our understanding of the material provided recently. On July 29, the applicant confirmed that the view corridor will not be obstructed. Initially, we had some concerns about that and raised those. And the applicant has clarified that we're looking forward to seeing that in new plan materials. Please advance to the slide. So as was discussed earlier in the applicant's presentation, there's some concern about the commercial and retail space and the appropriate ratios of those appropriate percentages in the materials that we initially reviewed. The percentage provided of public accessible outdoor area was 29.6% approximately. Although there is maximum of 5% allowed or per the town bylaws. And indoor retail space was 4.97%. Although there is a minimum of 10%, we understand that the applicant is planning on request or has requested a waiver for that and has provided information about the marketability of that space to support the rationale for the waiver. We anticipate reviewing this information and talking with the with the town about this, town staff about this to, you know, make our recommendation regarding this issue. Next slide please. Site plan layout and public realm. So one, one of our comments, 3.1.1 discusses the proposal to include rental kayaks and to provide for access to the water at town boat ramp. One of the things we noted was that there was no clear pedestrian access. And we were concerned about particularly about the safety issue as well as convenience and you know, frankly, the marketability of that, the idea of people being able to rent kayaks without clear access to the shore could detract from a retailer being interested in you know, using, using that rental. We understand from the applicant's response that pedestrian access to port and carry the boats will be made available. We look forward to seeing that in the next submission of site plans in order to review that and provide any comments, response or recommendation for approval on it. Erosion and sediment controls. So in the original planning materials, we noted in our comment 3.1.3 that erosion and sediment controls were not shown. We understand from the applicant's response that an erosion and sediment control plan will be developed and that we will be, they'll submit that as part of new submission materials. We look forward to reviewing those as well. Next slide, please. Historic commission. So we noted that the applicant needed to seek permit from the historical commission. Our understanding from the applicant's response is that an approval letter from the historical commission has been obtained. The applicant's response indicated that such a letter was attached. We didn't have it in the materials that we received, and so we look forward to seeing that as well. Next slide, please. Site plan layout and public realm related to stormwater. So one of the comments that we made 3.3.1 noted that there was no management of roof runoff from the west side of one of the buildings. Our understanding from the applicant's response is that the roof runoff will be drained directly to nearby waterway, overland through overland flow. That still leaves us with some questions about whether there is appropriate management included with that. Generally, when you do something like that, use a qualifying curvaceous area to to manage the stormwater properly. All runoff needs to be managed, particularly from point sources and drain leaders count this way. So we're looking forward to seeing the applicant's approach to managing this. Operation and maintenance checklist. We noted that there needed to be some revisions to that in our comment 3.3.2. We understand that the applicant is planning on providing an updated checklist. Excellent, please. In the applicant's plans and materials, there was mention of catch basin hood from manufacturer Leberon or LeBaron, depending on how you want to pronounce that. That manufacturer is out of business. We understand that the that the applicant will update that. And again, we're looking forward to seeing that in the plan materials, new submission materials. The infiltration system. So the comment that we made 3.3.4 noted that we needed more details to be able to determine whether this, the infiltration system would be constructable and was appropriate to comply with town bylaws. We understand that the applicant is going to provide those materials in a new submission. Existing utilities. So overhead utilities in particular were not shown on the original plan set. We understand that that's forthcoming in a new plan set. Your water separator. Again, we requested detail be added regarding one of the oil water separators. We understand that that information will be provided by the applicant in a subsequent submission. Excellent, please. So constructability comments. Construction entrance and truck washing. Construction entrance and truck washing was not originally shown. And that was our comment 3.4.1. Our understanding is that that information is to be provided in subsequent submission. And we look forward to reviewing that. Firm and curbing detail. We had noted in our comment 3.4.2 that callouts had, had not been included. We understand that those will be forthcoming in, in a new submission that the applicant will provide. Pavement thickness. We made note in comment 3.4.3. That a four inch thickness of pavement is recommended. We understand that the applicant has accepted that comment. And will indicate that in future submission and the next submission. And exterior lighting. So we understand exterior lighting for parking and buildings will be provided. Our original comment 3.4.4 noted that it had not been. So we understand that that, that that information is forthcoming in a subsequent submission. Next slide, please. So, next steps. Weston and Sampson. Will provide a second round of comments to the applicant's responses. And those were the responses that we received on July 29th. So, we will do that. And then we recommend consideration of the following waivers. So. Initial waivers requested are listed on the left-hand side. Reducing the number and size of parking spaces, reducing the drive aisle. For 124 Elm Street parking spaces within the five-foot property boundary. Those were the initial requests. Revised requests include a requirement for space at the end of each of the parking aisles. The wavering of the 15% building area. Requirement for public accessible ground floor and commercial and non-commercial residential uses of 124 Elm. And then the 150-foot spacing requirement from the existing driveways for 124 Elm Street. We would recommend that the applicant consider requests for screening of the ground level parking. Surface parking distance from Elm Street and adding 87 Elm Street to the waiver for the 150-foot. Spacing requirement. Next slide please. And that concludes our presentation this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we enter into the phase of discussion by the planning board members. And we will go by alphabetical order. And I will begin with Clark Brewer and I will finish the discussion. And one thing I will say is that in our discussion tonight, to the extent possible, we will. Work very hard to state items only once. And please, everybody know that we are accumulating everything in a record so that you don't have to worry. About us missing an item that has been discussed or presented in image.
Amy, a quick, a quick question in point of order. My understanding is that planning board members were, were going to make comments. And to the extent that comments were made prior to a planning board member, they could say, yeah, well, I. I kind of agree with what, whatever that, whatever Tom said on parking. But we, we're not going to be deliberating per se. We're not going to, there's not going to be a back and forth discussion. About the pros and cons of, of any aspect of the project at this point. Is that?
That is correct. This is basically a fact-finding discussion in which you're reacting to what you've seen. What you've read, what you've heard, and what you've just been presented with.
Okay.
And you can ask for clarifications, but the idea is that we're not having a back and forth.
Right. That's, that deliberations don't occur until after the public hearings closed. And then the planning board deliberates.
Correct.
Prior to making a decision. Okay, my, my first question is, has there been any revised plans since the initial submission? I mean, the Weston and Sampson has said, oh, well, when, when you revise the plans, we'll, we'll look at those, those in more detail. But has there been anything to date? I mean, the initial, after the initial submission, has, has the applicant submitted any revised plans? No. Okay, thank you. And then I've got a question for counsel. Karis, you're, you're still here.
I am.
Yeah, thank you. Regarding the waivers, I don't, I don't remember if we've talked about this at the first meeting. But I know of, I, I, I don't know of any, any instance where we've applied waivers. To special permits. In the village, we do have the ability to allow first-floor ground floor units. As an option, but it's not really a, it's not, and, and, and therefore balance out. Only retail uses on the ground floor, which is preferred. But, but the question at hand is, the applicants asked for waivers regarding. The commercial space and parking count and configuration. I, I know of nothing in the bylaw that allows us to provide waivers for a site plan. Or special permit. A waiver, it's, it sounds like it would be a variance. A variance request of a bylaw requirement. And that would go to the zoning board of appeals. Can you, give me some perspective on this or your perspective on this, Karis?
Yeah, Clark, thank you. I, I, I agree with you that I don't see any language in. The overlay bylaw or the general special permit bylaw that allows waivers. And that I am actually researching that issue a little bit further. But you're correct in that. Changing a requirement would perhaps require a variance from the zoning board. As opposed to a waiver from the planning board. So that's something that I am looking at and is one of the big. Takeaways I have from the last round of documents. So I'm not prepared to opine on it yet, but, but will be by the next meeting.
Well, and just as, just as a follow-up, I just opened up the zoning bylaw. And there's no language in the definition section about a waiver or.
Correct.
Seen anything in the harbor, village, business overlay district that indicates waivers even an option for the planning board.
Correct.
But I'd be interested in, in what you can find that. Will help the planning board as well as the applicant act. Act, respond appropriately on that issue.
Yeah.
A couple of things. I think last meeting I asked if the, the view corridor. Geometry could be confirmed. Where that southern edge of Elm Street. Geometry, how that hits the, the. The property line of this, this parcel. In, in particular, there, there, there seems to be a, there's a bump out. Of the commercial space that extends sort of from the, from the wall to a little bit to the north, not extensively. And then there appears to be a raised deck that, that extends even further. And then on the site plans. We have kiosks, racks, and some trees that extend into this. Triangle of view quarter. And my thinking is that the trees, the kiosk. Definitely would obstruct your view from at least the, the, the closest third of, of Elm Street. So that they. I would expect them to be relocated somewhere else. Okay. What, another comment that I have has to do with, and, and, and before, before I make the comment. I will say that I think that, that the mastering of the, of the three buildings is a part of a, an overall initial. Harbor, village, business village. Area. I think it, the, the materiality, the, the overall detailing and shapes, I think that they. That the applicant has done a good job at designing the, the buildings. But there's, there's the, the big, the big issue to me here is we've got private residences. Private residences and then public space or semi-public space and waterfront. And these two. Different types of spaces, they can clash. You know, I think there's been public comments about there, there being, you know. They don't want to see a restaurant because there's going to be smells and. At, at, at the last meeting, I, I did bring up one issue and that had to do with the balcony guardrails. They look like they're glass and they extend down to the bottom of the, of the balcony where, where people standing at the waterfront can look up and look right into. Somebody's bedroom. And that's probably not a good, good bet. There are other examples of this clash between public and private design. Of the buildings that I think I'd like, I'd like the applicant to address. And I don't want to be prescriptive about it. That also corresponds to some of the materials along the waterfront edge. I, I, I'm, my concern about this big grassy area is that lots of dogs are going to poop on it. It's going to turn brown and you're going to have to pave over it in a couple of years. And, and I, and I think in order to kind of. I think that's something to think about. And, and to me, the landscape controls aren't, aren't quite doing the, quite doing the job. Possibly the, the biggest, the, the two biggest issues. One. For me is the, the amount of retail space. There's, there's no, no getting around that this is a harbor village business. Overlay district with an emphasis on business. The intent of the bylaw initially was. That this be a robust mixed-use area that uses the value created by the residential. The residence, the residences, the, the equity in the residence to subsidize the commercial spaces. And, and to try and get the most robust types of spaces. Now. I, the applicant did go, go into Marina Bay and how spaces aren't rented out and. And I, I think they showed one picture in the upper right corner of their, of their first slide that. That showed a couple of kiosks and a lot of people right in a, in a waterfront area. I think that the applicant needs to do more research into successful. Mixed use and small-scale projects like this. The Marina Bay at 1,000 units, I'm not sure it scales. And, and in order to. Find the right design answer for the solution because I don't, I don't think we can provide a waiver. And even if we could, the, the town, the town was voted on this bylaw. And, and we, they expected to get 10% of robust commercial space as a part of this project. Plus 5% that could be outdoor spaces in the form of kiosks and terrace. Eating, eating patios, that kind of thing. So I, I don't see where there's. There's any flexibility in, and, and I really would, would push back on the applicant to do more homework. On successful scaled. Similarly scaled projects. To find out what the secret of their success is and then, and then make sure the design. Responds to that. And then the final, final main comment, I guess I would make, oh, and, and. One more point is that if all we're talking about is a, is a 1.5 of a Tedeschi retail space. That actually, the point works both ways. You, you know, you want the planning board to provide a waiver for that. You know, it's required by the bylaw. I, I just think. It should have been baked in to the project and I have a feeling that you've got a way figured out to, to, to make it happen. And the final thing has to do with the parking. Certainly the parking is going to be related to how much commercial space you have and what types of commercial space you have. The most robust and vibrant commercial spaces are going to have the most robust. Parking demands. That's, that's an unfortunate side effect here. But I think there's a tremendous opportunity for the applicant to pursue all the areas around the site. The public areas and make suggestions for how the, how the parking spaces can be maximized in the public. Areas surrounding the site and extending beyond it as well as. As well as the sidewalk areas and as well as increasing the safety. So increasing the, the parking count. In this particular area and trying to make it as safe as possible. And, and as useful as possible, I think is, is something that the, the applicant could stick their neck out on some design. Some design options so that when the town itself gets involved, that they. That, that there's something to look at and that the goals are, the goals of what will help this development. Are shown in these parking options. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Tom, do you have comments?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Amy. I wouldn't know when you wanted me to start.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I, I, I have to thank Clark for taking the thunder on the waiver issue. It occurred to me while I was sitting here, listening to the presentation, where is the authority for it? And I've been thumbing through the bylaw. And the general laws about special permits and I'm not finding it either. And so. I would like to ask both our council and especially Attorney Brodsky. To address that point because, you know, I think we have to have the legal authority to grant the waiver and it is nowhere in. The relevant bylaws. You know, everybody knows I submitted some written comments, partly out of my own style, partly out of the fact that this Zoom hearing is. Unnatural. I was concerned coming into tonight's meeting that the applicant was going to reserve itself to responding to the. Peer review and everything else would get ignored. And, you know. I've seen this in my professional life where people think, well, if I satisfy the engineers and satisfy the experts, I'm all okay. Well, no, the six of us are going to make the decision. And I, not out of ego, but I think it with myself. Or anybody else who makes a written comment from the member of the board, I think we should have a response writing to those as well. And just in part because of the Zoom process and allowing members of the public, you know, and again, I'll emphasize that I think this is one of the most important projects. This board is going to face. We're replacing a 50-year-old building and a hundred and something-year-old building, probably for the next 100 years. And. I, I think I'm very concerned about the ability of the public to participate in this process. So. To the extent they have to get their information by reading on things online, I'd like to see that anything that's put right in, we responded to. So that we can have some back and forth. You know, we have a time limit on tonight. We have, we're not. Able to do a lot of back and forth and get some of these questions answered. And, and I appreciate that George's and John's original comments tonight's. Was sort of touching on what myself and other members of the board said last week. But. You know, I'd like I'd like to see some detail and, you know, in response to some of the comments that have been raised. My biggest concern, in addition to the commercial. Not, you know, non-commercial mix of the project and I and I'm, you know, my memo set out some figures and percentages. You know, tonight, the applicant is admitting that they're a third short or looking for a waiver of a third of the requirement. You know, wherever the number is, we'll we'll get to. But the other thing that strikes me that's a threshold issue is the pure size of this project and I tried to emphasize that in my memo. Ever since I've been, you know, when I came to this town 35 years ago, it was, what was the first comment about the hotel? Well, it's this giant wall that blocks everything. Well, this is far more massive and is a far bigger wall. It is a incredibly prettier wall, I'll give you that, but it is a big wall and I'm not saying it's the wrong thing with the site. But it's. It's certainly not solving the wall problem. And I've mentioned I've had concerns about height. I subsequently see where the bylaw allows the bottom line measurement to be the flood elevation. But that is going to make this building plus the pitch roof substantially higher than what we have today. It is substantially bulkier than what we have today. More so even for the building across the street, I appreciate, as I said in my memo, that the one across the street is only two stories. But it's a much more massive building abutting residential areas and. I I don't think that everybody in the town has a true appreciation of that. And I made the comment and I'll make it here again, and Mr. McFarlane of the Conservation Commission had made the comment that. The drawings we're being shown, I don't think truly give anyone the scale of what this is going to look like. John, your your presentation tonight of the site plan is great, it gives great perspective, I would like to see, however. The old building superimposed over the new one, so we know we can make comparisons. I was out at the site the other day, I'd like to see on the ground where this building is going to go and I don't care if it's by cones, stakes or. Or paint on the parking lot, I'd like to see where all of this is going to go. And, you know, today in 2020, we have the advantage of all this technology now that we didn't have a long time ago. And I'd like to see some computer generated images and what this is going to look like from the street. With with all due respect, the aerial views don't tell us anything. I mentioned in my comments that I will gladly trail you off closeness to Elm Street, Margin Street, there's more space along the waterfront. But I don't think people have an appreciation of what this is going to look like as you're walking on a sidewalk on Margin Street. Of how massive and closer to the street than the existing building is. Higher, bulkier, closer to the street. What pictures I see of Margin Street makes it looks like the grades are going to be the same, but they're not. The building is going to be what, eight to 10 to 15 feet higher with the picture than what's there today. And and the size and the number of units, that all is going to dictate eventually what. Our discussions here, I think these are threshold discussions we have to have because then all the technological data about number of parking spaces and runoff. What have you, that follows after what we come to as a final building design. And I'm severely concerned that the public doesn't really understand what is proposed here and how massive this is going to be as compared to what's there today. What's today today is a horrible building, I. I thank everybody that, but we have to be careful because this will be for the next 100 years, what we're going to put there in its place. I guess I I won't say too much else, I, you know, I I've covered 14 different topics. I have concerns about the ownership and the relationship between a future condominium association and the town over the public space. I have concern of inclusionary zoning, I am not one who's going to want, you know, a payment in lieu. I would like to see the full number of units, whatever the final number of units we decide is going in this these buildings. I'd like to see an inclusionary zoning bylaw follow for once. And I I also think, you know, as far as the site goes, this, you know, we talked about traffic and parking. This is begging again that for redesign of the Elm Street, Margin Street intersection and. You know, I realize the town would have to be a part of that, the town would have to certainly take in, if not all of it, some of it. No, I would love to see the developer help with some of the costs, but I understand that they push back on that, but this is begging for redesign and this would be the time to do it. You know, I know the town is embarking on an analysis of the Elm Street corridor, but maybe we can speed that up in this particular area. I'll I'll leave it at that for now, I know, since we're just doing generalized comments. Again, I appreciate that whether myself or other members of the board are verbal or written comments that they be specifically addressed as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom, I'd like to call on Eve Tepper first, she has a comment on the question of a waiver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did find in the harbor overlay district, there were a number of places where you can, the planning board has the discretion to. Give a waiver, one is in the commercial space and the other one is in parking and it doesn't, the parking section doesn't actually say that you can give a waiver, but it says that. The planning board can deem adequate whatever off-street parking that they want to, so that could allow you to change it. The the one piece that I have not been able to find in the bylaw and I've been looking. Is what Mr. Brewer brought up, the the dimensions of parking spaces. And that is something I think that hopefully. Charis, you can shed some light on. I in a lot of cases in in other towns I've worked in, there's a section at the bottom that says, if you can't meet these, the the special perfect granting authority could grant a waiver or. Or or a special permit and I don't see that anywhere in the Cohasset bylaw. So that's the one I don't know about, but the other two, you know, the planning board does not have to grant any of these waivers. But there is a section that allows the applicant to ask for it and for the planning board to grant it if they want to.
All right, thank you for your clarification, I'd now like to go to Eric Potter.
Thank you. My concern is with the commercial use, just to go on the waiver issues while we're on top of that. I do see in the commercial use bylaw language that the special grant parent granting authority may waive this minimum. If we. If the applicant provides sufficient evidence of active uses on the ground floor, so I think that would give us the authority to make that decision. I don't necessarily see that in the parking, but I certainly see that with regards to the commercial use. My biggest concern with the project is the commercial use. Square footage and public use access, you know, from the completion of the project for the next 20 to 30 years. I think the applicant has done a fantastic job of of laying, you know, plan, setting forth plans that illustrate. How the public is going to be able to access and use this. Space moving forward. I would say that. My questions would be to 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 the the applicant of. With regards to the commercial space, specifically at 124 Elm, because it's going to be a condominium and. It relates to not necessarily when the project is completed and developer has control, but 15, 10, 15 years from now, when the developer is no longer there. Who is going to restrict the use of this public use, public space area? How can it be used? What times can it be used? Are the condo docs going to have restrictions on amendments with regards to? How this public space can be used, when it can be used, who can use it? Is it going to be a grant to the town for as an easement for perpetual use? I think I'd like just more of a definition with regards to proposed language. On how that space is going to be used and I'd like to have some sort of protection for the the citizens that. 10 years from now, when it it all is private residences, that there isn't something that could take place that could change or limit that use. I think the the use as proposed actually seems. Fairly reasonable and adequate with regards to 124 Elm Street. I do think that this project does take into consideration two different properties with 87 Elm there as well and. It seems to me that there may be some. Flexibility with regards to where the commercial space is applied. Perhaps there could be more, a little bit more commercial space, because there's only about 900 square feet, I think, at the at the Elm Street property. Perhaps that square footage. Could be used at the 124 Elm Street because my concern is that the 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 square footage at the. 87 Elm Street is or can potentially be dead space, there's really not going to be much public use there. And that would also allow for. Protection for the public and the citizens in the event that the one commercial space, interior commercial space that is currently proposed is unsuccessful. Or isn't a business that succeeds or or is 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 being used. Frequently by the citizens of Cohasset, that would at least keep some people down in that area of town. In the seasons that, you know, are not summer and spring or necessarily warm. The public space use again, I think is it 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 makes a lot of sense, but my concerns really are. That there's not enough of a definition on the plans or. Enough insight or 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 detail as to what the limitations are going to be, who can make those limitations, who can restrict the use, how it can be used. I don't necessarily think that the square footage is the important issue here. It's more about the public access and continual public use and. Being someone that's been in the village for, you know, nine years now. You do see it certainly an increase in public use significantly once the weather starts to turn. And it certainly dies down in the winter and off-season months. So, you know, it does make sense that there would be a significant amount of outdoor use. As opposed to interior use, but again, if that public use is open to. Interpretation on how it can be used, you know, for example, if it's all private residences and. The, you know, condo unit owners don't want anybody to be, you know, making any more noise after 8 o'clock at night. Can they place a restriction on when the public can access the property or when they can use it? You know, it doesn't really, the the plans are, it's not a, it's not significantly labeled or defined, I don't I don't think. On whether that's going to be a space that is free of restrictions and 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 open to. Commercial, you know, kiosk use or or, you know, food trucks or or, you know, little stands. How, you know, are there going to be any restrictions concerning that that public's use in the public park area? Which I think can be easily addressed, quite honestly, by the applicant in in the in the documents, they're going to have to submit to the town on the plans and. Further in the condo doc, but I I think that right now, it's a little vague to me. I i if they're down the line, those there can be restrictions placed on on how that area is used. And again, I think that. Maybe there's a little bit of discussion to be had about. Since this is all being submitted as one project, 87 Elm Street, 124 Elm Street, does it make sense to maybe, you know, look at. That 900 square feet at 87 Elm Street and is that going to be? A significant, so or a use that a a commercial space that's going to be used and accessed by the by the by the public? Or is that going to be maybe a dead space or maybe just a small office space? I'd like to see, I'd rather see a little bit more waterfront access, interior commercial space access. As opposed to a potential small office space across the street. You know, in instead of just having that 87 Elm Street and 124 Elm Street with one space each, but. You know, that's that's a question I'd leave to the applicant, if there's any, you know, potential options that the that that we can maybe move things around a little bit. But I do definitely think that the planning board has some leeway and has the authority to make some. To waive those minimum requirements and to. You know, work with the applicant with regards to, you know, the the required minimums. Again, that's just on the commercial open space, I don't necessarily see that in the parking. But I definitely see that on the commercial space area, I do agree with Tom. I think stakes in the ground where the building will go, I think that'd be, I think that's a great recommendation, I'd like to see where the building is going to lie. I think the public would like to see that too, I think it would be very helpful to illustrate and to have a visual and to be able to really. You know, grasp where the building is going to sit and and where the public space is going to be, I think that'd be nice. To be able to see it live or get a be able to visualize it. If you go visit the site, you know, prior to construction starting. Or prior to anything going up there and I I think the computer generated images idea is great too. My my, that's really my biggest concern, the massing of the building, I know that's going to be brought up and I know it's probably been discussed a lot. I do think that the the applicants, any applicant is going to be fairly restricted. With regards to what they can do with massing because they are bound by this public use corridor. The public view corridor, so, you know, grain granting and and that language being added to the bylaw, that does fairly restrict the applicant. And where they can put the building and, you know, what their building footprint can be. The bylaw does. State that there it's going to be a public view corridor and. That means that there's only a building, a certain amount of area at 124 Elm where they can put a building. Where if that public view corridor, you know, wasn't part of the bylaw, that would, you know, enlarge the space of the building, which would presumably. Allow for less massing, but, you know, that is part of the bylaw, I don't know if there's anything you can do about that at this point. That's really all, those are my, you know, really my biggest concern is the commercial. Or 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 residents use of the public space. And not only when the developer has control of the project, but five to 10 years down the line, are there going, again, just in summary, are there going to be restrictions? Are there going to be any protections that would restrict the owners of the condominium from slowly. Restricting the public's access and use of that. You know, not for. Walking over it, but for, you know, other activities and and potential business. Opportunities for, you know, small businesses to come in and with carts or or stands or exhibits or anything like that. I think that's pretty much what what I'd like to see is 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 how that's going to play out, not initially, but down the road.
Thank you, Eric, and what I hear you saying is is that you're requesting that a more thorough analysis be done of the use possibilities of the site.
I don't think so, no, I don't think I'm saying a thorough analysis of the use possibilities of the site, I think more of a definition on the plans. I think if you look at the plans, it's very ambiguous, the way they've been labeled with regards to the public space areas. For instance, this is a condominium. Project that's going to be going in there, I believe, so, you know, oftentimes in in there's there's exclusive use areas. So that would be, you know, restricted to each condominium, if if a condominium has a. You know, a backyard that could be an exclusive use only to the owner of that potential, that condominium. This is, in some respects, the public space area makes the residents or the town not an owner of that area. But certainly a participant and someone that has rights to that area. And the plans are a bit ambiguous as to. You know, what really is the extent of the rights that the public is going to have to that area? Just labeling it public space area seems a bit vague to me. And that may be because there, we haven't seen what the what the actual documents are going to be for the condominium. I would like to see a little more information on that and maybe some relabeling. I would like to see a little more information on that and maybe some relabeling of the, the, the areas that are, that are defined as public space so that we can be assured that the unit owners, you know, don't have an annual meeting down the road and say, well, it's still going to be public to space, but it's going to be public space from nine to five. And after that, you know, i- it's, it's not going to be. I mean, I don't know. It's, it's, it's very open-ended right now. And I don't know that we have any definition as to what, whether or not there'll be other place restrictions on it down the line as to what the uses may be. I don't know whether or not it'll be a collaborative effort with regards to maintaining that area, with regards to, you know, what sort of activities can take place in that area. I, I would just ask the applicant to maybe provide a little bit more detail as to what sort of protections the, the citizens and residents are going to have. So that if we do decide that we waive the minimum requirements, that the, the public and the residents are assured that they're going to have access and use of that area perpetuity, and that an amendment to the condo docs, condo docs can't be recorded five to 10 years down the line, that puts some sort of a restriction on that use. And then, you know, future boards, future town committees, future, you know, items that come in front of these boards and committees further restrict that use. I, I think I'd be feel more comfortable if it was, there was some sort of detail that would, would restrict that from happening.
Given the, the developer sufficient insights and I, and we'll be able to cycle back around on this again. But thank you very much about that and for the clarification. Paul Grady?
I don't think I could put it any more eloquently than Clark, Tom, and Eric, so I'm not going to pile on. I just have one other concern. I would like to see a street view, a person in front of the building and the building's looking up. Maybe a rendering. I do really appreciate the fact that we do an overlay of the existing property right now compared to what's going in there. And I am concerned also about the town dock usage. I was thinking about that. It's quite a narrow street. There've been some bicycle accidents, car accidents. Now, what's going to happen when people carrying kayaks or surfboards or something like that down that town dock? When a road that's narrow at best is going to be congested with foot traffic, kayaks again, and sailboards and things like that. But not to pile on, I thought it was a very nice presentation by the developers. And so tonight, I'm echoing Clark's sentiments, Tom's sentiments, and Eric's sentiments. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that. Paul Colery, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Hello?
Yes, could you start over again, please? You faded out.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm here, but I, I just, I, I don't have the best reception, so I'm with you. I don't have much to say, except that I thought the presentation this evening was great. And the one thing that I wanted to ask about exiting 124 Elm Street, as you're coming out of the garage and turning onto Elm Street, is it left or right? The view corridor to the south side, I guess you would say, if you were looking to your left to enter onto the street. I feel like there's a bit of a barrier there with the Veterans Memorial. I, I don't know what the other side of the memorial looks like. I, I, I can only vision it from, so if that could be adjusted slightly, so that cars could go in and out in a safer capacity. I, I, I really think that's, that's my only comment that I would add for the evening is just, I feel like that structure is a brick wall and a couple of feet tall could be a bit of a blind spot for people as exiting. If all the traffic is going to go in and out of that one spot, maybe we could trim down that wall a little bit. And I don't think it will interrupt the memorial at all. So that's all I have this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'll make some basic comments. And I, they really are two, two types of comments. Some are related to trying to get better specificity of the relationship between the state regulation of tidelands and the public space that's being offered in the project. I would refer you to a report that was written by the Conservation Law Foundation that defines specifically what is the relationship between public and private and the requirement of the provision of public space in areas within tidelands. And there's three pieces of tidelands, so that it, it is a little bit confusing. But I'd like to have a specification on that to have it clearer than it is now. We're really not, we're not even talking about really the interface with the, the actual harbor and, and the, the water side. The second is that in terms of the runoff models that were developed where we're worried about retaining the water that is generated on the site, on the site. I would like further clarification about taking into account the fact that on both sides of the site, we can have intermittent flooding when we have a high tide and a storm surge. So I'd like to understand how that is going to be addressed in the project. I would like to see a FEMA map and I'd like to see a consistent contour map. There's a contour map that has a gradient from 10 feet to eight feet. And it would lead you to believe that if there was water coming in one direction, coming in over one passageway, it would end up running out of the property and into the street. So I feel like the, the, the analysis of the context is important. And I recognize that what you've done is a site assessment. But because we know that these areas flood, and because we know that we're changing a lot of, a lot of the, the actual surface area around the site, I would like to have a better understanding of how the interface between the, the harbor, the, the ocean, and the flooding that is increasingly persistent, how that's considered in the project. I would also ask, on one of the maps, it says historic high water, but that's not really a definition. There are technical definitions in terms of what the reference datum is. And I, you cannot really measure what the existing height of the land surfaces if you don't have a reference datum. And so it's, I know what you have on your map, but it, it's not clear. There's several words and terms used, and it would be useful to have that clarified because it, it depends, it, it has an influence over the actual height of the project, obviously. Okay. And one other thing I would say is that, you know, when you're trying to figure out what the, the mean high tide is, you can't use the Situate Gate. People are using the Duxbury Gate and the Boston Light Gate. And so just trying to figure out what the, the water issue is going to be on the site would be helpful. In terms of parking, there, it looks like it's, I would like to see more clarification of loading zones. We live in a world today in which maybe 10 times a day, at an individual's house, a new truck drives up and drops something off. We don't go to stores anymore. We have things delivered to us. And, and I would like to see some modern estimates of what the expectation is of individual usage of that type of service, particularly because these are going to be high-value properties. And so people may find having materials shipped in is, is a, a must convenience. So you've got two spots, but I'm wondering if they're, they're sufficient in, in both the, the amount, amount of traffic that they can handle, and how would we handle traffic that exceeded the allocated space? And then I want to talk a little bit about the transportation plan. So, so I'd like to have clarification from our peer reviewers as to why they use the mid-rise apartment designation as the basis to partly, as a partial element in an estimate of the numbers of cars per unit. Because a, there, there's a significant difference between a mid-rise and a low-rise in terms of the usage of cars. This happens to be a low-rise because a mid-rise is five to nine floors. And so I just want to know why that was selected. I noted that the, I compared the study that was done by the consultant with the study that was done by Newbury Port, and it's a carbon copy. And I don't believe that the Cohasset Harbor and the Newbury Part, Newbury Part Harbor are the same. They're very different, very different. Site is really different, a whole host of things. And so it makes me wonder exactly how precise the value of the transportation study is. Literally, there are sentences and paragraphs that all they have done is taken out a number and put a different number in. So I'd like to have, have a, a better assurance that the transportation study is actually designed for as intimate a space as the Cohasset Harbor area is, because the, the Newbury Port is much bigger. And, and I know if I went and I found the next study, they would be using the same language because I know that's what we do. But in this case, it's really context that matters, in my view. The, I, I do wonder about the multiplier that they use to estimate what the per household car usage is. And I'd like to have more specificity on that. On average, Americans own 2.28 vehicles per household. So we're obviously making an assumption of something other than the average. And it would be interesting to know what that is. The other thing that I would say is that, in just looking at the diagrams, given that the, it was, as long as the economy is good, what people buy are SUVs. We thought they would go away, but it doesn't seem so. And, and one question is, is, is the parking and the garage set up to actually handle very large vehicles? And I, I say this basically because we just, I just, we had a building that was built in town. And the developer undersized the turning radius necessary for the vehicles of the household to actually get into the garage. I would ask that the traffic engineer give a good justification for the timing of the study that they did. They picked a time in the, you know, November, December area when there's nobody anywhere downtown. And so I don't feel that that is necessarily a good representation of a full-year view of the area. And I would really think it would be very important for parents that we have some additional information now while kids are down there and using it so that we have a better sense of, of, you know, who, who is going to be the folks we're worried about when, when it comes to actually traversing the area. I would also say that they put, you know, they, we're onsite for three days. And actually, it was two days and a half. And again, I think that it's a very unique space. I, let's see, it was yesterday morning. I got up early. I drove around and at seven o'clock, I passed 50 people walking on the, on Atlantic Avenue at, at, at five o'clock in the morning. That's a lot of people. And, and so I just feel like the infrastructure that is surrounding the development, we need to, we can need to characterize it as it's used, not to use modeling results that are generalized. Because I don't think it's a generalizable space. Another item is, and this is related to the, the need for any sort of adjustments in transportation. The master plan has just been done. And in the master plan, we, we spent quite a bit of time working out what the buildable lots were. In conjunction with that, over the last two years, the planning board has had properties come that are above the, the harbor inn which are now being broken up and, and being built into single-family homes. None of that information was incorporated in the transportation study. And they say it in the transportation study that they do not deal with the more ancillary kinds of development. But because it's so intimate, we need to understand better, more precisely about what is actually going to go on. And the master plan has the information in it, and we, we even have files in, in town that would tell you who's planning to do what. Another item that I think is important for us to consider is that the transportation study is good for seven years. And if you think about it, if, if you compare all the, the harbor studies that have been done in, in the New England region and Massachusetts in particular, they've taken two and a half to three years to actually go through the planning process. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but I'm just saying that, I know, George will be totally gray. George will have moved to Caribbean. But my point is that, that seven-year timeframe may be too short of a timeframe. And, and they, and they need to have better assumptions. That's, that's, we have tremendous amount of knowledge today, way more than ever. But, you know, who, who recalculates these models that we use? We use them as standard tools, but I don't think that the Cohasset Harbor is a standard space. Another item that was not taken into account in the traffic study is the fire station. Which is, it seems like that's going to be the road that the fire station is going to go down if they're going to go to any place on Jerusalem Road and, or anywhere towards Sandy Beach and beyond. And so how is that going to be incorporated into our understanding of what will take place adding about 120 people to, to the site on a permanent basis, not on a temporary basis? Okay, there is one thing that I don't know why it didn't end up in the transportation study. And that was, there was no mention, they asked specifically of the town, will there be changes at the site in the near future? And, and in the report, it says, no, but we're going to be taking up the water main. And I would think of that as being something that's significant. Maybe it's not, but it would, it is something that we're actually going to be able, we're going to be able to do, or we're going to be doing. I'm glad to see that the developer is working on the question of the interface between bikes and pedestrians and vehicular circulation. That's one of the issues where parents have contacted me personally. And I think we really need to work that out better. I would like to see more discussion of the surface areas around the development. And what I mean by that is, most of the sidewalks around the building are decrepit. And it would be worthwhile knowing how that's going to be incorporated into the development project and whether that's going to be something that we're looking at as a town responsibility, is it a project responsibility? And if so, we should start thinking about it now. And that was pointed out, by the way, in the transportation study, is that there, you know, the, there's variability in the quality of the, the actual footpath of our sidewalks. I, I guess I'm not real happy with the traffic volume data that they use. And I know that they're using the average, and I know it's from the state. But again, that, that, it's so important to realize, this site is not a normal site. It's not 3A. It's not Forest Avenue. It's, it's not the shopping center. This is a tiny intimate harbor. And so using calculations that were designed to provide national norms or state-level norms, to me, I couldn't use it in my own research. It's too general. So I would like to see better specificity of that about this. Because this is what's going to make the harbor project attractive to people to come to or not. If they can't get around easily, if they worry about crossing the street, then all of our plans to have it be activated will be for naught. And I think that we have to really take that into consideration. Another point about the, sort of the general discussion of the program about the, the public space, the retail space, commercial space. The whole idea is, it's a, we've got a system, right? We've got the village and we've got the harbor. And our idea is, is that we need to bring them together because the demand in either location is not going to be sufficient to support business. But if we have enough flow, because we have enough programming of the resources in town, and I mean the historic resources, I mean the, the, the consumption resources, the aesthetic resources, it's, it's that combination. resources, it's it's that combination. And if we treat these things as discrete, we're never going to get the numbers that we think are going to make things work, but we will have never tried. So we need to to actually figure out that story before we we dump it. We have to know the answer. Let's see, the fiscal analysis. Again, you know, my my concerns are that it was a very general analysis, and it had very little understanding. It felt it felt very superficial to me. And these kind of analyses can be much more specific. And we know that the world around us is changing. And these were very standard multipliers that were used. And I think that if we want to be able to inform the town, what's the impact going to be on the town? There are a lot of items that, you know, were sort of underplayed. For example, we don't really know what the demographics are of the people who are going to live there. Are we going to assume that the people that live there are all two persons in a three-bedroom place? Or are we going to are we going to think of it as a as a temporary residence or part-time residence? All of those things matter when it comes to the impact that it will have on the the fiscal system of the town. We didn't talk anything about sewage treatment, and we didn't talk anything about supply, water supply. And yet, those two items seem to me to be pretty important. And then finally, I feel strongly that we need a geotechnical review of the under-surface of the site. When was the last time somebody did a a core drill to know what's in there, to know what can be actually held up on the site itself? We're assuming that this is solid, stable bedrock or something. And what happens if it isn't? So I and I'm sure that you were planning to do a geotechnical, but before but not having it now, that seems that's an important part of the story that I think we we need in the future. Okay, so so those are my initial comments. And I will, I have all this, I will type it up and and provide it to you. Eric, for point of clarification?
Yeah, point of clarification. With regard to the three items about the the site stability, the geotech stability, I I think the I just want to understand how that applies to our review of this special permit. And whether that how that applies to, you know, our job as planning board to make a Because is that am I I may be missing something, because I I can't recite the the bylaw verbatim. But is that part of this special permit review? Well, number one, they all relate to the same thing. The fiscal system, again, is that part of the special permit review? And the the use of the public space, the third one, is that part of the the special permit review? Those three items, I mean, the use, I'm talking about use. I'm not talking about, because I talk a lot about use, but I talked about how it would be, how the uses would be protected, not the specific uses. So those three items, how do they relate to our special permit review? Are they part of the bylaw review? If you could clarify on those three issues.
Okay, so in terms of the use, I don't feel like I was really commenting on, you you mean like who's going to live in the condos? Or what's the point of the of the question on use?
Well, I think you were talking about the public use, about analysis of, again, analysis of what would how that public space would be used.
Right.
I'm sorry to you.
Okay, so that was my first point. And my my first point is simply, what does the law say that that has to happen in the tidelands? And since there are three different specific types of tidelands, and public and private are kind of in certain ways distinct and in other ways commingled, and I want to know, what does it say to us that we have to abide by? We're abiding by the our overlay district plan, but I'm asking the question of how does this come into alignment with state state policy? That's that was the first one. Fiscal analysis is always done in any development project to figure out what the impact is. There can be offsets, there's a number of different issues, and you want to be able to plan for things like school expansions and, you know, various asunder water water capability, et cetera. So it's a it's a very police usage, things like that. So it's a very standard piece of an impact study. This is an impact study inside of our overlay district specification. But from a professional perspective, these are things that we do. They will do geotechnical analysis. They will have to do geotechnical analysis to find out how they're going to anchor their foundation in the ground, right? And they're going to be putting in a garage, so they're going to have somebody doing geotech work. I think it's incumbent on having for us to have that information so that we understand. Because in some cases, you can't do certain things that you wanted to do. And until you know whether you can do it or not, it leaves an indefinite quality to the project. Right? Because, I mean, the the overlay doesn't tell us what kind of study we should get at all. It's what we do as a practice that is that that we're seeing.
Maybe this will help, right? A large home, and I'm just saying that on a large home review, and again, this is just for clarification, so that when we do deliberate, I'll have a better understanding. But on a large home review, we have a very specific set of criteria that we are to review: landscaping, massing, siding, all these different things. So that we have an idea of the different items that the applicant should present to us. And what I see at the site of this bylaw, that that I don't know, is that part of the review process that the applicant needs to provide us with information on you, the impact on the school system? The there's clearly, for instance, on the other hand, there's there's a parking by provision in the bylaw. So they have to provide us with compliance with parking or information about parking. In the bylaw, is there language that would require us to, you know, evaluate what is the impact going to be on the on the school system? Or is that something that the town may want to take into consideration, but is that part of the special permit process? Is that and is that on the applicant to provide that information? And I I don't disagree, you know, geotechnic, geotech studies and all that stuff sound like something the applicant certainly is going to do. But is that part of our responsibility with or or the applicant's responsibility to provide that information to us? Because unlike the large home review, that's very specific on the items that we are to take into consideration, and that the applicant has to inform us of, so that we can make our decision. It it doesn't appear, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe you can point it out to me, or or Karis can, where those where that would come into play with regards to this bylaw. And that would go the same to the fiscal system of it all. And and I think they're very important issues and points that you bring up. I just don't, I I want to be, I want to be clear and understand, you know, the how we are to, what do we need to know for review of this project?
Just a minute, I want to make sure that do a time check, because I have a public, I have at least one public comment. So I have three people who want to comment. And Eric, my my answer is, we have to make sure this project can work. That's fun. And you're asking questions about, could a condo organization 10 years down the road change the deal? Well, you want to set up the situation so they can't change the deal, but it doesn't say anywhere in the document that there has to be a specification for that point, right? The assumption is, is that it will, they're they're making a public space, but there it it's not written into the overlay that that public space necessarily has to be configured in any way, right? We don't put any specifications on it.
Yeah, but the loophole here is that if we're going to grant a waiver of the, we're going to grant a waiver of the requirements of the bylaw, it's at the planning board's discretion. The difference between what you're saying and what I'm saying is, if I'm going to make a decision about waiving the not strictly relying upon the the bylaw, it's at the planning board's discretion, right? So so I have to make a decision based upon the information the applicant's giving me. And I think that it's reasonable to ask questions as or ask for more detail upon about what the intent and what the restrictions are going to be, or potential restrictions down the line are going to be about public use, if I'm going to grant a waiver on some, right? Because and that's where I was going with it. If they if they if they had come to me and and was completely compliant with the the bylaw with regards to commercial space or open public use space, then I would say they were compliant with it, right? They've complied with that 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 bylaw provision. And I could ask for more specification, but
Okay, so I understand what your point is. And let's let's park it over here for a minute and get a get a little bit more commentary on this point. And then I want to make sure I I address the citizens' comments. So Tom?
I don't have too much to add. I mean, I will disagree with Eric and Yi about the ability to grant any waivers, from what I'm reading at the moment. The overlay bylaw does specifically address municipal fiscal impacts, and I think that's pretty broad. And again, I don't think we should get too much into legalities. I think just under general special permit and site plan review, in addition to this specific overlay bylaw, we have a lot of broad authority as to what we can ask about, because certain criteria have to be met under a special permit and a site plan. I think, however, that discussion is best going to be had when we start actually getting into writing specific conditions. And, you know, then we'll decide on a case-by-case basis, do we have the authority for that one or do we not? I think, in general, we have the broad authority to ask for information in order to make a reasoned decision.
Okay, thank you. Clark?
Yeah, just quick, just quickly, we we've had homeowners associations. Bylaws are part of a part of our special permit in subdivision proceedings. So I I think that the the points that Eric makes in terms of what are the hours of this public space, and what's semi-public, what's permanently public, what's what's deed to deasement, however that works, probably needs to be robustly considered as a part of whatever the condo association is and how it works, and what their what their mechanisms are. With in in terms of some of the technical things, you know, with regard to geotech and having soil borings, just as an architect, typically, that's 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 that can be done before permitting is done. It's possible that the the developer's done some, but he's got a building in the way, right? And then in the 70s, they would have done borings or or something to find out what they could build on, because that building doesn't appear to have settled at all. So but in in terms of what we do for the special permit site plan in the Harbor Village bylaw, I'm not sure it's relevant to have the the soil borings. It it really that there's sewer available and enough water, water pressure available for sprinklers and things like that. That's really the the level of information that we probably need regarding those technical things. But but Amy, you you have a broad brush on a number of issues that are far relevant to to this project. Some of them probably go beyond what's absolutely necessary, but still probably useful to have a general overall context and be able to address issues relevant to this project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And and as this is, and I said at the very beginning, what this is, is a fact-finding experience, right? We are all discussing the items that we see as we 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 receive information, the information has changed, we see it, and and we move forward. So so that's how I view the the perspective, or that's my perspective on what we're doing. So since everybody's had a chance to comment, I'm going to go to our citizens' comment. And Lauren, do you want to read it, or is it okay for me to read it?
Whatever your preference is.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the comment in the chat is from Jean Patterson at 12 Woodbridge Farm Drive. Would like to would like further clarification on the parking spaces. My math says 81 total spaces minus 58 resident spaces, two per 29 units, leaves 23 for public use. Will those spaces be for day and overnight use? What if residents have visitors? Say one-third of the residents at any time have a visitor? Say 10 extra cars? That leaves 13 for public use, which is less than the 17 today. Does the peer reviewer think that is enough for new public use of the space? Eating, yoga, artists, kayakers, retail stores, et cetera? It is unclear whether some of the line parking spots on Margin Street that exist today that are used by boaters are being lost for the development. And will those regular parkers now try to make up some of the public parking spaces in this development? I understand that the parking conversation needs to follow the end result of the building layout, number of residences, et cetera. But I think if you want townspeople to come and use the space, they won't if there is nowhere to park.
All right. Thank you. So is that the only comment that we have? We didn't get any emails or anything from anyone?
That is, I will say that we have received several comments throughout the process over the past few weeks that I have been emailing to the board as part of the public record. I have emailed it to the applicant, and I have uploaded it to our town website, so there's been several comments received. Right now, I'd also would just like to invite, if there's anyone in the attendees section that is interested in speaking to the board, please input your name and address in the question I answer. We have a Douglas McGregor would like the chance to speak on the topic of commercial space requirement. I will promote Doug now. Doug, if it when I promote you, if you could please state your name and address to the board for the record.
Doug McGregor, 7 Border Street. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Great. I know I have a couple minutes. As background, I've been a commercial landlord and commercial real estate investment analyst for about 25 years. I sent a letter to the board to give my thoughts, and I'll miss stay in my lane on what I know a little bit about, which is the commercial requirement on the harbor. First and foremost, I I'm glad the board recognizes that way back in one night at Will Cut comments, you guys did add your ability to grant a waiver to the amount of space. Because that night when we were talking about this, it was a lot of talk about how much this would add to the inventory of town. And I think your ability to do that is important, because, per my letter that I wrote, I mean, simply put, by all measurement, this town doesn't need this added commercial space. It being exacerbated by the fact that it's seasonal, I think it'll deflate what the progress has been made downtown with struggling businesses. And I I really do feel like when this amount was just determined somewhat arbitrarily, I I'm in fact skeptical of the 3,400 square feet that they're proposing. I mean, that's that is 17 seabirds in in terms of space. And in a town where we have 5,000 feet sitting vacant next to CVS and Curtis Liquor, since the Photoshop went out of town, out of business, this just doesn't need it. I'm urging the board, per my letter, to really take the safe bet here and to create a harbor experience which is not commercial-based, which is basically open to everyone for all uses. I'm very much in support of the proposal they've done, or that they have, and I'm confident you guys can work out the long-term, not the viability of it, but the long-term security of of it maintaining as a commercial space. But I'm overall, I'm asking you to create a harbor experience on a commercial experience, and I'm really urging you to tread carefully, because I do think this volume of space adding to our inventory is an incredibly dangerous experiment. And the safe bet is really just to embrace open space accessible to all, all ages, all uses, and and something that will be seasonal, and we're seasonally focused and can recognize that nine, eight, eight months of the year, this is going to be dark. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Eve Tapper, would you like to have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I you may have already gotten satisfaction on the discussion that you were having earlier about the findings for the special permit. But I just wanted to say that in addition to the findings that the board needs to make in general for special permits, there are additional findings they need to make for this overlay zone. And I want to remind the board that that there are some standards that the developer needs to meet, or will find out whether they can get waivers of them if they ask for them. But that it nothing in the overlay zone is allowed by right, because it's all part of the special permit. So even if they meet those requirements to the letter, it still needs a special permit from the planning board, which takes into account lots of different findings. So you don't need, I mean, you may find it one way or the other, but there are addition, this with the what the overlay zone does is just add additional findings to what you already have to find for a special permit. It's it's not a by right It's not a by-right project by any stretch. And that's why they're here.
Great. Thank you very much, Eve. I'm looking to see if anyone has further comments. Lauren, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? We seem to have gone through both the public comments and the planning board comments and the peer comments and the property owner's comments.
I'm not seeing, I just, I thought I saw somebody else in the attendees that their hand raised, but it's not appearing anymore. So again, one last time, if there's anybody in attendees that would like to speak to the board, please insert your name and address into the Q and A. At this time, I don't have any further comments for the board. I think there's been a lot of substantial discussion tonight. And I look forward to hearing what our takeaway points are. And for our next meeting, I would like, before we conclude this meeting, to discuss the proposed schedule. As we know, we have a tentative schedule that's been subject to change as this process continues. So I would just like to confirm again what our next steps are for our next hearing before we conclude.
All right. Tom, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just, in terms of the citizens who I can see is watching us. But in my comments, my written comments, I had specifically referenced the comments of Mr. McFarland, which were very detailed. And I had specifically asked for responses to his comments. I think they were very spot-on. And I just want to add that in my request that his comments be specifically responded to as part of the record. My other comment is just, you know, with Mr. McGregor's point is, you know, we have this bylaw and it got written a certain way. I'm somewhat at a loss, because I thought the developer had participated in the writing of the bylaw. I've certainly represented a developer who did that in another town. But, you know, then our project that followed that followed the bylaw we wrote. I'm just, you know, I'm wondering if we're catching ourselves. And I realize economic conditions have changed and COVID has changed things. But are we going to be finding ourselves needing to rewrite the bylaw? Or edit the bylaw before we can really proceed here? We just can't ignore the commercial requirement of the bylaw. We don't have the power of waiver that I can see. And so I just want to throw out there that that might need to be a possibility here.
Thank you, Tom. George McGoldridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, appreciate all the comments.
George, you'll need to probably stop your video and just go audio, because we can't hear you.
With the processes we've been going through. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Can you please start over?
Yes. So, Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity tonight. As always, it's been great to hear comments directly from the board members. We spent two years working with everyone in town, all the butters, people in Town Hall, in a very open process in order to get to where we could submit plans. But as everyone knows, once we submit the plans, we cannot have individual contact with the board members. And that's the reason why Mr. Callahan's comments were not responded to, because we were precluded from doing that, because the hearings had already opened. We did look at them. We do have answers for them. We noticed that a number of the peer reviewers had the same questions. So we thought and hoped that a lot of those would get answered. I know there's a number still that haven't been answered. And perhaps maybe I can send a letter to Lauren and do it that way to respond, if that's what you guys would let us do. In regards to the public comments, we have individually gone out to those that have made comments. We approached Mr. McFarland. We have traded emails. He was traveling. He was down the Cape until today or tomorrow. So we will expect to meet with him directly, as opposed to taking up the planning board time. So we will be meeting with him in the next couple of days to go over all of his comments. In regards to the other comments that were made at the first hearing with Katie Dugan and Katie Dunn, we have reached out to both of them as well. So we are allowed to and can reach out to individuals, and we can clarify their answers with them. But we cannot do with the board members. So I apologize to Mr. Callahan that we couldn't respond. We just, we were precluded to. And obviously, as transparent as everything's been, that's how we're going to continue to do it. In regards to all the other comments, we look forward to. I assume it's going to be written, a written format from everyone. I would tell you that the majority of comments we heard, we believe we can deal with. I think the ongoing discussion about the commercial/retail will be ongoing. We did look at a lot of other individual areas. We didn't just look at Marina Bay. We didn't want to take two hours of your time. I think one of the most telling issues is that the retail broker that does all the co-hasset sent us a letter saying he doesn't think any of it's going to work at all. That's very discouraging to us. But we will continue to work with the board and we continue to work with the butters in the town in order to get the best project that we can.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. So at this point, what we need to do is to chart a path for our next meeting. But in a minute-
It's just a quick, I just, it seems to be important. If Karis could, perhaps, at the next meeting, let us know what her interpretation of the commercial use language and the public use language at the last paragraph, paragraph one. I'd be interested, because I think that will, I think that's something that will come up in future deliberations. And I think that's important to, for me to have some clarification at least, to make a decision on whether, you know, what our rights are as a planning board and with regards to, you know, waiving or accepting what the bylaw requires on a commercial and public use space.
All right. So that's directed to Karis.
Eric, in 22.6b1, the last sentence, is that what you're specifically asking about?
I'm sorry for not going through you, Amy, but yes, that is what I'm asking for.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So before I pass it on to Lauren, I just want to try to do a little bit of a summary of where we were, because we've covered a whole lot of grounds. So we had an introductory overview from the property owner, which provided greater specificity on a number of items that were not discussed or not discussed in detail during our first meeting. From there, we, and they did clarify, the comments did clarify a number of points that had come up in the previous meeting. We then moved to our peer reviewers, in which they pointed out where in the work that has been done by the developer, that they're in alignment with the overlay and where there are areas that there needs to be closer scrutiny, such as ADA spots. Questions of, in general, there seems like there's still significant work that needs to be done on the traffic study to figure out how we're going to evolve the use of that space over time. There were some discussions about sort of the Elm Street corridor, the Margin Street, and some of the uses around that area that need to be worked out. We're making assumptions in some of the analysis that probably needs to be thought through more carefully, such as using the town doc, which may or may not. We've got to get it specified. It's got to be written down. It's got to be designed out. There was a very, continuing long discussion on the question of the commercial viability of spaces currently specified in the overlay. And that needs to have further investigation in terms of, I think that we keep calling it certain things. We call it commercial. We call it retail. We call it, it could be food service. And I think if we would just say non-residential use, and then imagine what non-residential use could be that would be attractive for public people and the residents to actually participate in, that we may uncuff ourselves from a conception of what we think that space could be used for. Because I think we need to do that. I think we have to think broader than we might be thinking at this point. So I have written notes that I will type in and then pass them on to Lauren. So Lauren, would you like to sort of walk us through how we get to the next stage?
Certainly. Thank you. I wanted to flag, it's already been addressed, but I just wanted to flag section 322.6b1 of the bylaw. Eric did mention that, and that is what we've asked Karis to highlight. But that is a section that speaks about commercial space under the overlay district. Next, I just wanted to, oh, no, never mind. I thought there was Q and A question, but it appears to be gone. And then next, if I could, I would just like to share my screen and show you the next steps of our schedule. We had previously laid out some time, some, you know, topic by meeting date. And I wanted to touch base with the board after hearing our discussion this evening, that we, what we want to do next. Our next meeting is September 9. And I would just like to confirm how we want to address this. This, I want to be very clear, this schedule from the beginning has been tentative, subject to changes as the hearing evolves. This in no way means to rush anybody. This is just something that we tried to set out so that our consultants, peer reviewers, whomever could be prepared to attend on different nights. So with that, if you could just take a look at this and please give me feedback as you see fit.
I'd like to call on Eve and ask Eve if she has anything she'd like to say that she heard we should reiterate in the presence of both the developer and the consultants?
Am I unmuted? I can't tell.
No, you're talking. We can hear you.
Okay. So I don't have any specifics, but I think it might be helpful to throw it back to the applicants to see if they thought they heard something additional to address some of the concerns of the board, so everyone's on the same page.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Did you, do you want me to answer that?
Please.
So the next meeting is a month away. It talks about affordable housing and architecture and landscape, which are significant in both. Is there any opportunity to meet between now and then to further the discussions that we, I don't believe that we finalize tonight? Is there any opportunity to meet between now and then?
This is, this is an issue that's come up between staff and board members in terms of what are we able to do? What are we allowed to do, given open meeting law? And if you're asking, could we have another open meeting in which we continued the discussion of these items or other items that we are, we're working on? I would turn that over to Lauren or to Karis. But I think it's, we'd have to have an open meeting.
Either way is fine.
I don't think there's a choice. We'd have to schedule another meeting. So then the question is, can we do that? And does it work with people's schedules?
I would just like-
Would you like?
I mean, the thing that's critical is if the applicant needs more information from the planning board and the consultants to, in order to have a direction for making changes? Or does the applicant need more time? I mean, it takes time to make the changes. You commit to the changes. Do they, do they need a session where we drill down on this this commercial waiver thing as like a single issue? And maybe like the homeowners' association hours of use? Maybe a couple of other major things that would, that might have an impact on design? It seems to me that's the practical thing of what the applicant is asking for. More specificity, so that they, if they have to change the design, they know. They know, they know what.
I would say one thing further, which is that there were physical objects that were requested. So visualizations. I think a 3D model would make an enormous difference in us trying to understand what the impact of the project's going to be. And some additional specificity for some of the items that we discussed tonight. So we are really talking about physical things. You know, the ability to sense the site and the implementation of the site based on the design that's been proposed. Eric?
All right. I just lost my video. Yeah, so, and just because this is the easiest form for me to do it with everyone here. So in my opinion, you know, the applicant's going to take what we discussed tonight. They're going to go back and they're going to come back at the next meeting and probably make a further, they're going to discuss what we discussed tonight. They're going to come back with answers to our questions, update us on things. We're going to review what they presented with regards to the items that we discussed tonight. And, you know, we don't want this to go on longer than it should. But the reality of things are, is that there's likely to be maybe some follow-up questions on this. If I look at that calendar and that agenda and schedule, it feels to me as if we have a meeting for our architecture and landscaping and affordable housing on September 9. And that doesn't take into consideration the follow-up that we're going to have from this meeting, which is going to create additional questions and maybe some time to think about what they've come back with. Again, my concern is this, is that, is that we will be in a position where we have, they will come back, discuss the commercial space, maybe the parking issue. We'll move on to agriculture, accessible housing and the landscaping issue. And then it looks like we're going into deliberation, and that's, there's one meeting for that. My issue with all of that, without creating, you know, a significant amount of extra meetings, is that where is there some ability to take in what the developer comes back with or the applicant comes back with? And also giving them, is there going to be another opportunity? If we have additional questions after they come back with our, from the questions we have from this meeting, to address those additional questions? Or are we going to be deliberating and be in a position where we have to make a decision based upon, you know, one round on fairly significant issues? And I understand there's a time constraint here, and we're trying to move things along here. But with some of the bigger issues, there may be a need to kind of allow everybody, without being forced into a corner, to really flesh things out a little bit more, you know, not, you know, not to drag things along, but a little bit more. And the agenda as it now stands seems to me that the applicant's going to come back, give us answers to the questions we have today, move on to the next topic, and then we're going to be deliberating. And there may be a significant amount of additional questions and follow-up that we have. And that would allow this project to be a more successful one and more complete at the, when we vote or after deliberations.
So Eric, we will deliberate until we're ready.
No, but, but-
I mean, we have to set the schedule up for that to happen. But, but we're not going to be pushed to make a decision until we're ready.
But isn't the deliberation, and forgive me, I don't know necessarily how this all works every time, but isn't the deliberation after the public hearing's been concluded?
Yes.
And doesn't that deliberation preclude the applicant from making any further comments or revisions or answering any questions that we may have?
That is correct. But along the way, until we actually make the determination that we're closing it, we can continue to add information, even if it adjusts the agenda. And we have to go back on an item, because we feel that A, we've got new information, or B, there's been some other change in the situation. So we're not going to be, get to a point where it's just a cliff. Lauren?
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to address some things about the agenda first. When we initially proposed this, before it was coming to us, I know we didn't want this to sort of drag out over a long period of time. So it was requested by the board that we did condense it. At the time, though, I've been trying to be very upfront that this is very much subject to change as the conversation goes on. And as, you know, the chairwoman just stated, there's no need for, I mean, this is just to get an idea of a tentative schedule, but we can change this as necessary. There's no need for you to feel like you have to rush the board. My ultimate goal is that the board feels comfortable and confident to make an informed decision, whatever that decision may be. And I don't want anybody to feel like they were rushed. I want everybody to feel like they've had an opportunity to have the information and the discussion that they need before they close the hearing for deliberation. Because, again, to confirm, as Eric just questioned, once the public hearing is closed, you cannot take any more- once the public hearing is closed, you cannot take any more public comment. It's just a deliberation amongst the boards. You can't take any more information on the application. With that said, also, the question about whether we can add a meeting, quite frankly, I don't think that it would be best to add a meeting in between now and September 9, and the reason being is that listening to all of the presentation that occurred before this, I know there's, you know, new plans that should be submitted. There's a lot of follow-up that the peer reviewers looking to see. We do need time to get those plans, to have the peer reviewer review those plans, submit comments. The, the applicant will then want to review and have time. And then we also want the board to review whatever comes of that. So I genuinely think that there's a lot of things that need to be worked out between now and then. But I also would suggest that this doesn't preclude the peer reviewer and the applicant's engineers from speaking to one another in the meantime, in between this peer review process, if the board is comfortable with that, just so long as, any conversations with the board, the full board, need to take place in an open public meeting. We can't do any sort of working group style. You know, we need to have everything on the public record and in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Clark?
Lauren made most of the, most of the comments that I had, but I, I still think, even though what's set up for the 9th of September is, is sort of, is landscape, architecture, and the, and the affordable housing component, there, there's still sort of new topics, if you will. And, but I think that in terms of addressing everything that's come up to date, the applicant has, has plenty of feedback where they can still, I think, make, make some amendments to their plans that, that address, that try to address those in, for, for the 9th, you know. And then, and then that gives them really, it gives them three or four weeks to, to, to kind of get some of that work done ahead of that meeting, so that that meeting can be the most productive possible, where we're looking at some new stuff, and we're trying to drill down on what's, what's, what's come up already that's critical. So we're making progress. I, I mean, I think that that's, that's the overall goal. But it's still going to take three, three or four weeks, probably for their team to, to, to kind of drill down and get a handle on where they think, what we've said specifically and, and, and in general.
Madam Chair, my, my video is not working, so I can't raise my hand.
Okay, that's okay. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. I guess the host has stopped my video. Geez, I even got a haircut for this. Come on. So, so I, I counted 36 items that the six board members requested. So you're all correct. There's a significant amount of work that we need to do. But can I suggest that we take up the affordable housing and landscaping between now and then, so that we get all the comments? Because we're going to be, a lot of the comments tonight were on landscaping and view corridors and building sizes and such. The two topics of inclusionary zoning and landscape and architecture are part and parcel of what was talked about tonight. I'd hate to spend a month doing all this work and then start the conversation that's going to defeat what we just spent a month on. So if there's an opportunity between now and then to talk about those two issues, so then we have a full plate of what the major concerns are. We can use the 9th, and we can use whatever time thereafter, but we're, we're basically doing a lot of work with still two big issues unknown that will impact and affect the project.
Sounds practical.
I mean, I, I tend to agree with that, because I feel like, you know, today, tonight we leave with transportation as a big issue, the physical size of the site or the project is a big issue, the, the core area of the public use is a big issue, and I, I separate parking out because it's such a scarce resource. And those are, those are all going to be effort-filled to solve, and they are going to, they won't just come easily. And in the meantime, it, we do, you know, the, the issue of affordability, the affordable house, housing has got a certain level of constraint on it itself. That is, there are strong feelings about what to do there. And, and it could take up a good portion of a meeting to address that and the, the way in which the site's going to look. So I, I think
Instead of five weeks from now, could we make it three weeks to cover that, those other sessions?
Let me ask Lauren, does that work for your schedule? I know that your schedule and Jen's schedule are just extremely busy and hard. So there is a certain amount of staff preparation that's required that we have to make sure is possible.
Three weeks is the 26th.
Get my spigot now. One minute, please. I know Jen will be, Jen will not be with us. Jen is out that week, but, let's see.
Yes, I'm going to be at the end of the month for a couple of weeks. And, and I appreciate everybody, what the applicants are saying, and it makes a lot of sense to continue. It's just that this, this has been a lot of information and a lot of meetings leading up to this. But again, I know, I thought we were getting an updated set of plans, but I see Mr. McGoldrick's point, so it's really, it's really up to the board and Lauren if it can be done. I can have someone cover my end of things, but we do have an extraordinary amount of meetings in the next couple of months, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. And that wasn't very nice, Tom. Laura, would you like to comment?
Yes, I, I can, I can make the 26th work if the board is available. Then I had it as a tentative hold, but I have, I can reschedule that meeting.
Let's see if the board members can do, do it, because that, you know, it's a critical, we want to keep the numbers together. So is there anybody that cannot make the 26th?
I can do it.
Okay. Paul Grady, can you do it?
I'm going to have to start my schedule, but I've got a question. I understand George's concerns. I understand the meeting coming up about the affordable housing. But with a project of this magnitude, is this timeline to be compressed, or can we stretch it out till everything's done right? All the ducks are in a row, the i's are dotted, and the t's are crossed. That's just a concern. Again, you know, my business keeps me busy quite a bit. You know, I could make the meeting most likely, but, no, I'm just concerned about, they were compressing a project that's as big as this, that's going to have the magnitude as Tom mentioned, probably for the next hundred years, or Eric mentioned, and Clark. So I am concerned about that.
So one time before, we actually were at the same kind of moment where we didn't know what our timing was going to be, because we weren't sure exactly what the work level was. Can we keep the, the date that we have set and then figure out whether or not realistically we can put another meeting in, and whether that would make good sense and let people think about it for 24 hours, and then we get back to you? Is that a bad idea, Lauren?
I'm sorry. Unfortunately, we can't do that. We have to continue.
Continue to a date certain.
So we have to do it in time.
Great.
Yep.
Can you insert a meeting after you've selected the date and time, as long as it's posted with enough time for the public to be present?
If we, if we continue to the 26th, if, 26 doesn't work out for whatever reason, we could continue from the 26th.
Yes.
You still have that option.
Right, you could do that.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Would that, would our quorum requirements, for example, if only three members could make that meeting to continue the hearing, would that compromise the quorum requirements for voting later in this, when, upon conclusion of this process?
Yeah, we would want to have all, all planning board members present.
Right, so that's my question. If we have a hearing session on the 26th, for example, and it doesn't work out, and we only have three members there to, to continue it, is that a problem?
Well, not for continuing. I mean, if all we're doing is saying, we're opening the public meeting to continue it to the 9th of September, that's not going to be an issue for, for the, for final deliberations and voting.
Correct. There has to be substantive discussion. So you would, absolutely would not be able to have any substantive discussion on that date. You would only open and continue.
Okay.
So would it, does it make sense to, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, does it make sense to pick that date if you're not sure? Because then you do have to actually meet on that date to continue. Right?
Right. Correct. Eric?
But it's only three of us, and, and we can meet from, we can be anywhere.
Yeah, you can be anywhere in the world now, but with Zoom, and, and we're all here tonight, so we can, this is the only thing I'll say, and you guys can decide all that stuff. I'm, I'm available via Zoom. But I think there's been a recurring theme here with, with regard to review of this project, and that's that some of the members have been concerned about not having enough time to allow the applicant to come back, digest, move on to the next subject, and, and then deliberate. So I think there has been a recurring theme from the onset that, and, and I want an aggre, I personally want an aggressive timeline here. I, I, I don't want to push this out further than it has to be. So I'm all for the aggressive timeline, but I also want it, to be able to deliberate and be informed. And I think there's just a recurring theme here that's come up in multiple meetings that people are concerned that, on the planning board, that they may not, there may, may not be enough meetings to allow the applicant. I also want the applicant to have the time to be able to come back with, with everything. So I would say, no decisions need to be made, but a strong consideration should, should be given to not extend this unnecessarily, but adequately allow for everybody to, to, to sit at that deliberation table and make the best informed decision.
But, but, you know, it's a chicken and egg thing, where, where they still have more primary information to, to, to present to the board. And they don't want to do redesign stuff until they've, they've gone through that process.
Right, I agree.
They've done that info dump, and then, at the, whenever that date is, then they can go back and change plans or do whatever.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not confident that I hear a unanimous vote to add a new meeting. What I hear instead is that we should retain the schedule that we have, and that will provide sufficient time for the landowner to make the adjustments in the analysis, for the staff to process that, for the peers, peer reviewers to process that, and that we retain the schedule that we had set up before. Tom?
I just, I just want to go, it's not going to meet again till the 9th. The applicant is going to, showing us onsite like paint, cone, stakes, where, where everything's going to be, that that be done before the 9th.
Okay, so that was a point that I didn't make, and I will reiterate it for the record, which is, there's been a request that there be some kind of mock-up, some physical mock-up of what the footprint of the building is going to look like on the existing site, and that the preference certainly would be that it occur, that the, the visitation of whatever the mock-up is occurs before the meeting of the 9th.
I mean, they have to agree to our request, but, you know, rather, I don't want to be in a position right now of imposing that on them, but I think it would be certainly helpful if we had both, you know, the onsite locations and the CBI before the next meeting.
All right, so that, that's going to have, that's in the, in the hands of the, the landowner, and we'll hear from George what he can do about that.
I'm sorry, I could not hear what Mr. Callahan just said.
Oh, what he was asking for was to have a mock-up using cones or spray paint on the existing site to see what the, the full extent of the building will be once it's built, to get a sense of the mass.
Madam Chair, that's one of the 36 things that you're asking for? Yes?
That, that was discussed. If you've got that down as a note, and what, what Tom was just asking is to make sure that that could occur, if possible, before we meet again.
Right. So I, yes, that's something that we will try to get to, but quite honestly, we're not going to spend a significant amount of money between now and 9th, because the 9th may have repercussions on the whole project. So that's why I think it makes a lot of sense to try to meet before that. We're not trying to compress the schedule. There was actually a date in August on the original schedule, if you look back on it. So we're not trying to compress it. We're just trying to be practical and pragmatic about how the process goes. You're asking us to do a significant amount of rework, but you haven't even looked at the whole project. So we're not going to do a lot of the rework until you look at the whole project. I mean, it's pretty simple. So typically, there's lots of working groups and committees when you're doing a project like this. For some reason, we're not doing it here. That is fine, but at least give us the benefit of the doubt of letting us go through the project before we go back and do all this redesign that's being asked for. That's, that's all. And it's obviously your, your call, but that's it.
I, I understand. We were asking you for a lot. I understand that. So again, just, before this gets to the final point, I think the community needs to see what it's going to actually look like, as best as we can provide at some point.
Okay, so Paul Grady?
So, listening to George, I, I understand that, and I could go along with that. So why don't we stick to the original schedule? Give them time to get all their things together and follow the project through, and there'll be questions after that and after that. I don't know if deliberations will be pushed out, but I'm all for giving the project the time to get the stuff, to get everything together and answer all the questions or concerns, and we follow the, we follow the schedule.
All right, so then what you're saying is that a meeting later this month will be all right with you?
It would be fine. I would like, no, I'd like to follow the schedule that we, that Lauren's already put up, because as George just said, that they need time, and they don't want to expend a certain amount of money. Totally understandable.
What he doesn't want to do is do some significant amount of work on something that is connected to what we're going to hear about next, and
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we want to get everything, we want to get everything done, and then, and that, so we at least want to get the next chunk of, of the investigation in front of us, so that we understand the full project. And then beyond that, we will be getting revisions and analysis that we have requested. Is that correct?
As George said earlier, a moment ago, that, you know, we hit the affordable housing part of the project, and I think there's going to be significant questions, concerns going into that. So give, allow them the time to get their project, the questions, or 36 concerns that have been raised, addressed, and answered. That'll pose some new questions, I'm sure, but just attack the project as the way it's laid out right now.
So that's not what, the, the request is, that we insert a meeting at the end of August, where we look at the affordable housing and the landscaping-related elements, so that we have the total picture of the project to consider. If that's then available, one would presume he can start planning to connect things that we can look at again, but aren't necessarily dependent on the pieces that we don't know. But that if we don't know all the pieces, we're going, it's just going to elongate. Lauren?
Just a comment that, so the, the next meeting, September 9th, the following meeting after that, September 23rd, is just two weeks after, and we'll turn to a regular, sort of everything. So, I'm just, if the board would be willing to have architecture and landscape, affordable housing, and whatever items the applicant feels that they can't address on the 9th, and then from there, we then follow up more on other items that they can't, feel they can't address yet, until we speak on those on the 23rd.
All right. Well, that, that leaves us with the schedule that we have planned. Can I get a, a vote of the board about their view on this? Clark? Stay the course with the existing schedule. You, you can't hear, we can't hear you.
To me, it's practical and reasonable to the applicant to have a meeting in three weeks instead of five weeks. That means he can finish his presentation, and then maybe he has a few things that he can follow up on tonight, from tonight's meeting. And then, then he's going to decide whether he wants to do, like, how much redesign and how much, how much real, real kind of reconfiguration work, based on everybody's input, he's going to do. Right now, he'd have to wait, he's going to have to wait, and, and, and the whole project loses two weeks, I think unnecessarily, maybe more. So I'm going to have it forced, move to the 26th for housing, the inclusionary zoning and landscape presentation.
All right, I'm going to take that as a vote. Eric?
I vote to move to the, to put a meeting in between, is it 26?
All right, Tom Callahan?
I'll go along with that as well.
All right. Paul Grady?
I'll go along with it.
Okay, Paul Colery?
Paul Colery.
Paul Coleri, aye.
Okay, Amy Glassmeyer, aye. So we're putting in another meeting.
Do we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing to the 26th of August?
Oh, we do. I just was going to sum that up and say to Lauren, that's what we have just basically done. So I would like to make a motion to close the meeting and start it back up again, the 26th of August. Do I hear someone who?
Second.
Second, you made the motion.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. It needs a time as well.
The 6:30 same time?
Yes.
Second.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I just be clear? It's not to close, but it's just to continue. You're ending for tonight, but you're not closing.
Right, I think I said that, didn't I? Did I not say that?
You said close and I just want to make sure that it's clear on the record because I I had a client get stuck with that one once.
Right, we're continuing the meeting.
I'll second with those amendments.
All right. Votes, Clark Brewer? Tom Callahan?
Yes.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Paul Coleri?
Paul Coleri, aye.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Okay, Amy Glassmeyer, aye. So it's unanimous. I think with that, we're finished for the evening. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You need to vote to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You need to you need to vote to adjourn and I'll see you on the 26th, Tom. I'm coming back for this meeting.
I need to vote to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Right, thank you.
You have to roll call.
Thank you, everyone.
Paul Coleri, aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
And Clark Brewer's already said aye. Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.